All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, May nineteenth. Just one study session item for tonight. We got City Manager Sean Lewis here to provide counsel and overview of the South Broadway revitalization corridor. Good evening, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be pitch hitting tonight for Tim Dodd, who is traveling today and can't be with us. He's the project manager for this project, but asked me to fill in. We've also got a number of staff members here in the room that are available to assist if you have questions. So I'm going to just jump into some of the information that you already saw, and so I don't want to belabor any of those points. So let me know if I am. So the location is really Jefferson down to Bellevue. The we've tweaked some of the existing strengths and opportunities based on some of the feedback that we heard from you all, based on some of the preliminary feedback that we got at the open house, but really thinking about, you know, we have a couple of really significant parks and trail amenities with Duncan and the Southwest Green Belt. I'm connecting pretty close here. The schools, we've got four schools that are in this area and really a strong and unique business community. It's kind of spread out in terms of that, but you know, a number of, you know, we might have a, you know, a luxury suitcase shop next to a reptile store, but we really think that that's kind of the unique, interesting character of this corridor. We also just recognize that we have really strong and vibrant neighborhoods on both sides, east and west of the corridor, and then a lot of community interest. I think at the time that we did the council request, we had twenty seven people who had signed up for the the strategy groups. Now we're over fifty, so a lot of interest in this project. Some of the challenges, of course, as you drive up down the corridor, you can see vacancies. You can see building as well as property deterioration such as the parking lots, signage, a lot of times, sometimes there's missing signage. So just overall kind of deterioration in key pockets as well as functional obsolescence, which of course means, you know, a building that's been converted maybe from a residence to a commercial building, and it really is no longer meeting the needs of current day commercial needs. The same with some of the really kind of low ceiling buildings that you have on the corridors. So you have buildings that have been vacant for longer, sometimes because of functional obsolescence, and then it's just a big corridor. It's a challenge to really get your hands around and revitalize a big, large corridor, especially with the speed of traffic that you have there, although we can view that as an opportunity as well. The pedestrian infrastructure has just not been maintained. It is, we have not invested in that historically. I would say over the last at least twenty years, and even really the the five that I've been here. We really only started in two thousand and twenty-two to try to address some of that, and really just a lack of public amenities in general. So I want to start by just reminding you back in two thousand and twenty-two, actually, when we were looking at paving Broadway, this is something that council was telling us, we really are tired of the condition of Broadway. And I said, based on the information that I had from Public Works at the time, we have funding to either do north or south, but we cannot do both. And unanimously, just as administrative feedback that I was asking for you all for, unanimously, council at that time said, we want to start with south. We have not reinvested in south. At the same time, there was an opportunity that came up through Dr. Cog, I believe, where we were had the opportunity to apply for some funds to really talk about how we can make the sidewalks more walkable, that we can prove transit options in the corridor. And so Public Works at that time applied for a complete streets grant. So that started in August. Council approved that August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. So this has been a long time in coming, and that was a study session that actually in two thousand and twenty-two of August fifteenth, the council meeting where you approved it wasn't until March thirteenth. So you executed an IGA to do that project. And then a lot of discussions with our partners at RTD, with some of the, even some of the businesses in the corridor there. We had our first open house on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, so a little more than a year ago. Mailer was sent to all the residents and businesses along the South Broadway and Sherman Street. An open house was held in the community room. We were at about thirty percent design then. So we gave you a report on that at the council meeting December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Actually, that's that's when you awarded the design of contract with HDR was two thousand and twenty-three. And then another council meeting to go over that thirty percent design after the open house, that was on February tenth. You all asked for another open house. You also asked for a number of changes. So if you look at the screen, the top image on the screen here, you can see that a couple of things that we've done. Number one, we modified the colors per councils' request to really match the branding colors that the city already has. So communications worked with Public Works to make sure we got that right. There was also some scaling down based, the renderings that you all saw made it kind of look like the entire sidewalk was being painted. What we want to make sure the council understands is that it's just the bus stops. And so when you look at that gray strip at the top, that's the sidewalk. The sidewalk, which is really the travel pattern for pedestrians, is not being painted. It's really just that vicinity of the bus stops. And we also talked about new bus stops. There are no new bus stops. This is existing bus stops that are being refurbished in partnership with RTD with shelters, with this paint scheme and a number of landscaping elements that have been added. So just wanted to point out some of the changes. We also got warranty information on the paint. We also got graffiti information on the paint, which we can talk to you about as well. The banners on the light pole, you can see the banners that we have in downtown Inglewood, working with the EDDA on those. We want to do that up and down the corridor to again add that pageantry, that vibrancy. We have amazingly gotten approval from Excel to do that. And then the Broadway medians, you probably saw the first two blocks of medians between Jefferson and Lehigh have been done. So last week, all of the plantings were done. We went with pollinators, we went with perennials that the council has been asking us to move towards that'll come back every year. We've gotten all of the irrigation along the whole corridor upgraded to where we can keep plants alive. Alive and Parks was really watching our contractor in that first section of this project, funded project. So we can actually potentially, not to commit Parks, but to replicate that work and do some of that in-house as we move along. All right. So I did add this slide that you did not see from the last presentation, just because I think there has been a little bit of confusion on what the project is and isn't. It is a community engagement project to really hear from and learn from businesses and to engage them in the process. Implementing planned projects that I just mentioned in the previous slide, plus plan for future projects and future improvements as well, with a real focus on beautification as well as the economic vitality of existing businesses. In an effort, this is all an effort to attract new businesses, to provide our residents with additional places to shop, dine, gather and do business, but it is not an effort to displace existing businesses. This is not something that anybody on staff, and I'm sure council would agree, would like to see as a result of any of this process. It's not a housing initiative. We talked about housing last time. We heard you and in talking to others within the community. We think that because we have the Affordable Housing Task Force and that project moving forward with staff working to bring back the recommendations that you want to see on that and the analysis, that's going to be kind of a parallel process, but it's not part of the South Broadway Revitalization Plan. It's also not an effort to change the character of the corridor. Again, kind of that diversity of businesses, we think is a strength in the corridor. And so we're not trying to, staff doesn't want to, you know, fundamentally change the character. We want to beautify the areas where we have influence, such as the sidewalks, the street, the medians and that sort of thing, and then work with businesses to find out if they want grants, work with the neighbors to find out what what may be missing kind of business character that we might have in the corridor. And then lastly, it's not a land use initiative. So the project goal remains unchanged. I know you've got these slides, so I won't spend a lot of time on that. The purpose remains to identify strategies to ensure the public is ensuring that the corridor is a place where people want to live, work and play, and then a lot of community engagement. The community engagement is really going to be the cornerstone of this plan. As I said, fifty folks have already signed up to serve on those strategy committees, which in a very short period, we think that we can continue to get additional folks. And then you may know from your, from the community engagement plan that you all adopted, that communications came up with, I think, in the last couple of years, that we have a number of ways of reaching out. One of the ways is to really consult with and and help empower residents to be part of the decision making process. And that was the goal of creating the key stakeholders groups as well as the, as well as the strategy committees that have been formed. So these are the key stakeholders. We heard you two weeks ago about some tweaks to this list. So you'll see that reflected in terms of those key stakeholders. This is just kind of a snapshot of what that community engagement plan that council adopted and that we are following. Sometimes we inform, in this project, we actually want to consult with, handhold with the, I mean, in partnership with the residents to really to come up with the strategies that we bring back to council, involve them, collaborate and empower them to really be making recommendations to the city council as we move forward. So these are just some of the specific strategy committees and the way that we think that, based on the communications plan, we think that they would be really advising you all and and interacting with staff. We do have our communications team here that, working with Tim Dodd, have really developed a great plan for this, but we want your feedback on that. And so I'm, we have a slide on each one of these. The only change that you've seen from this is that we really are working to kind of combine economic development and redevelopment. And then also we've taken that housing strategy area off based on the feedback. So what I'd like to do is just wrap up with just giving you what the description of each of the strategy committees is and what we hope that they'll be doing in branding. It's really engaging them for a name for the area that respects its unique culture and history, but is also a marketing tool to get people excited about it, to bring people in, to make people have a sense of they've arrived in this area because it's a unique and special area where people start wanting to come and start wanting to spend time. The strategy two on safety is to engage the community in a proactive approach to safety through crime prevention, through environmental design and enforcement. And talking to Stacy with the police department today, she said that there were a number of businesses that she talked to that are already asking for a SEPTED, a Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Audit of their business and are excited about this being a part of the plan, where we really try to engage businesses on how do we help you reduce crime so that the whole corridor is safer. Strategy three is economic development, again, doing some kind of combining with redevelopment, but employing strategies to diversify and strengthen the local economy, utilizing strategies that are in the approved strategic plan for economic development that council approved, as well as new strategies that we expect and hope will come from the public as we move through this process. Redevelopment is employing those long range strategies to ensure sustained redevelopment of the corridor, but again, occurring naturally as property owners are interested, but really focusing on the existing businesses that we have there now. Strategy five, got a lot of feedback on this at the open house, but a signature event. One of the things we hear from the businesses, particularly retailers, restaurants and bars and breweries in the corridor is, you don't do any events in our part of town. And they're exactly right. And so we know that the chamber has made some efforts in the past to do that. We want to hopefully reengage them, reengage other stakeholders and partners. Some of my most interesting conversations with Doug Cohn and Chris Dewis separately were their ideas for how we could use existing things that are going on down there and maybe make events from that. But we had a lot of feedback on this from the public at the open house. Strategy six is wayfinding. We had thirty-two people that filled out a one or two page survey of all things wayfinding. So a lot of feedback that we've gathered on that. But that's really just, you know, strategies and elements to connect the community with existing and planned amenities. We got heard from the public that they really like that we're trying to get people to the Sherman Bike Lane with our wayfinding, that they were trying to get them to the high school and Penn Stadium and some of those amenities that are there, but we really don't promote them or make them known to the community because we don't really have a wayfinding implementation there. Strategy seven is addition of new city amenities. These are just some things that, you know, have been thrown around, but really we want the community to tell us what they want, and we got a lot of feedback here too. But pop-up libraries, parklets, I think parklets was one of the more common that we heard. So kind of using some of the parking spaces and turning those into kind of, you know, removable green space or meeting space there in different parts of the corridor. Strategy eight is complete streets. So you've you've got that plan moving forward. A lot of community engagement with that so far, and we are getting ready to come back to council in the next couple of months for that, to award that contract and to get going on that project. That's scheduled for sometime in August. So what we'd like to do is as we're gathering community input and starting to put together strategies and checking in with council regularly on those, is really at some point in kind of unveil a plan that is in conjunction with starting the Complete Streets project so that we can really get the attention of, you know, property owners, of the media, of residents and get them excited about some of the things that could happen on the corridors. So we're trying to make all these things kind of line up from a timing standpoint. And then the last one is public art, just building on the city's successful history of adding unique, cost-effective public art installations that reflect the unique history and culture of the region. So I just have three questions to pose. We can take this any direction, but I felt like after the last meeting, what you all wanted to spend your your time on was making sure we've got the right strategy groups or kind of components of the plan identified. Maybe we've got some that shouldn't be in there. Maybe we've got something that you, something that you want that isn't there. During my one-on-ones, remember Russell mentioned safety has got to be an element. We said, oh, my goodness, we'll add that in. So there's been a little bit of input as we've kind of bounced some ideas off of, I have ideas off of council, but we really want you to tell us, what are we missing? What should we actually take out? So that's the first question. And then what stakeholders are missing, and I can go back to any of these slides. And then what role does council wish to play as the engagement piece progresses? We're going to be, I envision that we would be bringing, you know, things back to you as the committee starts to take shape. But please let us know how often, at what what touch points do you want throughout the process?
Sean, thank you very much for the overview. I will open it up to council questions. Was it Steve first or Mayor Plutem? Go ahead, Mayor Plutem, and then we'll go to Steve.
Thanks for bringing this back again. I was, I missed the council, the last council meeting where we discussed this. And I was frankly shocked at the reaction from from council as a whole in that it was so negative. Not from every individual council member, but the sense you got from watching that was that council does not want to see South Broadway improved. And I just disagree, wildly disagree with that. And I know the business owners I've talked to along there do as well. And and staff is right on track here. This stuff is all great. I think we need to be implementing all of this. But I also want to revisit the housing piece, especially if we have economic development in here. We're, if places that people love to go, people want to live in those places. And so we also need a housing, you know, housing plan for this corridor as well. One of the interesting things about it is it's been zoned for higher density for many, many years, but hasn't, it hasn't happened there. And I think that's part of the reason why we haven't seen the business development in some areas along there. Those things go hand in hand. And if we're going to try to see this place, this this part of the city thrive, which I desperately want, this is my piece, my piece of South Broadway in District Three. This is, this is where I want to be hanging out, where I do hang out, and I want to see this place come back, come back to life. And I think the housing is going to be an important component of that. What if we're going to see economic development there, we're going to need, need to see an equal increase in housing along there so that people can live and continue to provide the the economic grist for those businesses that are there as well. That doesn't just happen. You can't have have low, super low density and expect to have a thriving business community along there. So we're going to need, I think we're needing both of those pieces. And I would love to see that thought of strategically and not just hope it happens or something like that. I know we have the Housing Task Force going on, but they're not focused exactly on South Broadway. In fact, the Affordable Housing Task Force isn't focused on one particular area of the city. We want affordable housing broadly. So I think it's important to think, think broadly about that. If we're going to bring this place back to life, we're going to need more housing. And in addition to that, one more thing I'd like to see along the lines of housing is, we had this discussion a couple of years ago on on single stair access. I think this is the part of the city where I've always envisioned that being a really potent tool we could use. We want to see more housing along there. I know when we did Code Next, we had a lot of people say, hey, if you're going to do housing, do it along Broadway. Well, right now, we aren't seeing much of that housing development, mostly because the the lot, the the lots available for development aren't big enough because they, these large floor plate designs with the two exits required just aren't happening. So I'd like, love that consideration to be a part of this. I've heard from citizens that they would like to see us reconsider that. And the state just passed a bill on it as well for cities over a hundred thousand. So it's coming to Denver. I think it would really benefit Inglewood to see that here as well. But thank you for the work on it, staff as a whole, and and City Manager Lewis for bringing this back to us again.
Member Ward.
First, I'll say, I'm willing to have the conversation on single stairs, but I would like to do that separate from this particular project because I think that's that's a citywide policy that we need to have a discussion on and is not necessarily perfectly related to what we're doing here. I'm going to posit a somewhat different perspective than my friend and colleague, Councilman Anderson, did. And this is sort of what I saw at the community meeting I was at as well. There are two very strong, very differing opinions on how this project should be approached in our community. And I think you probably saw that if you looked at the, at the feedback maps that we had, where people could post sticky notes. One person would post more density, and the other person would post no more density. And then there'd be hash marks on each one from people that walked up and wanted to agree or disagree with 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 these ideas. If I had a magic wand away, if I would find agreement in the community over what our vision is for housing going forward. I think there is a group that very strongly appreciates and wants to continue with the status quo, and there is another group that equally strongly wants to densify certain areas of the city. I'll note that this is one area, as Councilmember Anderson has has pointed out, that increased density is allowed along that Broadway strip. There are a couple of properties along that Broadway strip that might lend themselves to a conversion of some sort. We have some hotel properties along there that are often used to house transient populations, for instance. How would that area change if these were converted to apartments where people actually lived and became part of the community that they were in? That's a discussion that I would be willing to have. The one strategy in this packet that gives me the most pause, however, is redevelopment. And I think that is a very, very politically charged word, redevelopment. I I look through the strategies and I see what redevelopment means, and there are a lot of them that are more gentle in nature that I think I could potentially support. A census of businesses in the area, for instance, a map of the underlying zoning and parcels in the area. These are tools that will be useful to have in the toolbox in the future, regardless of what policy we set in that area. I'm willing to move forward on those. There are a couple of other strategies that I think run counter to the first slide that you showed us that says, we're not looking at changing, what is it? I had it up here, but what we're not doing. I think a couple of these slides tend to imply or explicitly state an effort to displace existing businesses, a housing initiative, an effort to change the character of the corridor, or a land use initiative. When we talk about doing a comprehensive zoning evaluation, we are talking about a land use initiative. So how can something be something and not be something at the same time? And this is one of the, one of the things, I think, that caused some heartburn in the community. The public outreach that we did, the open house, I would like to see those continue because I think that was a very, very productive meeting, and it did reveal some of the pressure points in the community over this. I'll also say in closing that I think there are residents in District Three and residents in District Four that agree or disagree with either my opinion or Councilmember Anderson's opinion. Ultimately, what I ran on when I first ran for council was a concept of balanced development. And I think we sometimes have made the mistake in this city of trying to change things overnight. And so the harder we push and the faster we push, the more resistance we find. I think an evaluation and some more gentle changes in the area are our best bet for having this adopted by the community. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Ward. Member Wright.
Thank you. The open house, I spent so much time discussing with so many residents, most of which I've never met before for the first time, which was very nice. And I had to explain to each and every one of them that it was my feeling, and I would hope that this council would agree, that we would not take anybody's property by domain and build housing. And those were the questions and concerns. So there is a misconception there, or something was put out, I have no idea, that this was the belief by a lot of people. We have to tread lightly. I believe these properties are privately owned. And for us to be discussing this right now, this council decided to take housing off this list last week. And there were four of us that decided this. The single stair. That discussion would be separate, and I think we need to redo a history lesson why Inglewood took it off. There were a lot of lives lost in Inglewood, and that's why single stair isn't allowed anymore. I have, one of my things, because I was speaking to so many people at that open house, and I was there from just a few minutes after it started, I was one of the last people to walk out. I never got to see that board. I think there should be pictures taken and it sent to council so we could see. As far as the community groups, I guess one of my questions is if there's over fifty people that have signed up, and I know that there are others, I've been contacted and asked, how do you sign up? And I've guided folks to the website. Will everybody that has signed up be allowed to be on those community committees? Or how will they be selected to be on it? As a council member, I would like to be engaged as much as possible. I think it's our duty, and I think it's our duty to know how the public feels about this, especially as decision makers. One of the things that I would like to see as communications come out is, City Manager, you were mentioning other previous actions and that type of thing. I would like that on the communications that come here because I'm not seeing it. And I would like to know the cost of this as we're just looking into it. We have a lot of projects going on in the city, and with our revenues changing that type of thing, I believe there are grants involved in this, but what is it going to cost? The the painted sidewalks are a concern, and I brought that up before. The, the painted sidewalks are a concern, and I brought that up before. As, as somebody that would be considered a fall risk, I have to watch every word that I walk. Um, and I, I will use myself as an example. If it is wet outside and I'm coming in from the circle, I have to be careful even on that marble floor when I walk. Um, so painted surfaces, I have to be careful. This is a concern. I don't care how big of an area it's painted. Even on crosswalks where it's painted, it's slippery when it's wet. And I've stated it over and over again. If it's around a bus stop, that's where people, and how do I say this gingerly? People with disabilities tend to ride a bus because quite often they can't drive, or my husband drives more often than I do. Um, and it's a concern. Is there a way we could find out how often there are injuries when the bus stop areas are painted? It's a, it's a big concern for me. Um. I have other questions, but I'll let someone else go.
Thank you, Member Wright. Uh, Mayor Protem and then Member Prang.
Yeah, I just want to respond to a couple of, couple of things here. Uh, first of all, City Manager Lewis, was there anything in this plan about taking properties for housing by eminent domain? Was that ever an idea here?
No.
Okay, um, but like that, I don't know where that idea came from, but I would absolutely be opposed if it was in there. But if a citizen was going to approach me and say, um, and say, I'm opposed to any taking of property for eminent domain to do housing, I would say that's not in the plan, like the answer to it is that's not in the plan. Council doesn't want to do that. Staff doesn't want to do that. Nobody wants to take, take properties by eminent domain. Um, I, I would wildly oppose that. So I don't know why we're bringing up things that are just totally unrelated to what we're working on here. What we're trying to do here is, is foster an environment along South Broadway that will spur economic and economic growth. And if that, if it's successful, that economic growth happens, then people will want to move there, and that will further spur economic growth. All of these strategies are awesome, but they aren't going to work by themselves. They're only going to work as a package taken together to bring life back to this area. And if life comes, people will come. That's how cities are made. You can't just, um, we want, we want thriving businesses, but keep the housing away. That's like, that's not the real world. That's not how city making works. If you want thriving businesses, you need people in those areas. So Councilmember Ward, you bring up balanced development. Balanced development is putting the housing where you have a thr- a, a business corridor, where you have a transit corridor. This is the, the most balanced thing you could do with an area like this is to allow for housing um, in the most meaningful way possible so that you could see this place come back to life. Um, nothing else is going to bring life to this place unless we get thriving economic development and housing where people want to come and live in this area as well. Uh, so that's why I'm so passionate about this is they work together. These two are absolutely going to have to happen together. So I hope we can get our minds around that and see if we can, it's, I know there's always going to be people on one side and people on the other side of the issue. The goal here is, for me, is to figure out what is it going to take to make Inglewood a thriving city? To make South Broadway a thriving corridor? And if that means we allow for housing along there, then bring it on. That's what, why do people love going to the further north on Broadway? Because there, people live there, there's lots of life there, there's lots of community there. But as you go south on Broadway, there's fewer and fewer housing units and fewer businesses. As a result, both of those things work together to make a thriving city.
Member Prang.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing the presentation back and some of the clarifications that were offered tonight. Um, I do very much appreciate the clarification on the painted sidewalks. I was one of the people that just wanted to make sure that it was not too busy. Um, I think that is a relative norm in a lot of cities that it's around the bus stops. Um, I'm wondering to potentially address Member Wright's concerns on, um, how slippery painted sidewalks potentially could be? Is there any kind of, um, sealant or some kind of surfacing that could be done on top of the painted sidewalks that would make it less slippery so that it's, it's not a ongoing concern for residents? Um, so I guess I want to go back to some feedback that I rece- well, no, actually, let me start. I, I would like to address, uh, Mayor Protem and some of the characterization that he made of comments from our first meeting when we discussed this. I, I think it's mischaracterized. I think that there's actually quite a bit of excitement for this project across council. Um, I just think that there's some caution, um, some stronger than others that's occurring. And those diverse opinions is what gives us the best work that we can do for, for the city. So, um, I'd like to continue to see us respect that with one another. Uh, we can have the, you know, super enthusiasm and we can have some caution and get the best product that we can get. Um, so to that end, uh, City Manager, you asked about, um, you know, moving forward. Um, you mentioned, you know, the possibility that we could maybe have some more community meetings. Um, one of the main pieces of feedback that I received that night from multiple people, um, with varying mindsets on this project was that there was no presentation done. Um, I think that there's potentially some confusion on what's the Complete Streets project, what's Walk and Wheel? What is South Broadway revitalization? And how do those overlap with one another? Um, as we're talking about the revitalization, revitalization of the area as a whole? So, um, if we do have future meetings, if we could have just kind of a, even if it's a quick overview, what this is, what it includes and where it does overlap so that we get some more clarity out in the community. Um, I also had a really interesting conversation about the branding piece. Um, and I'm excited for that strategy group to really dig into the idea of branding this area. Um, the, the suggestion that was made to me that I thought was really nice was that this should be a soft branding that, that of course we want to, um, create some excitement and really, you know, honor the unique character of this corridor. But we don't want to do it to such an extent that it kind of segregates it or takes away from it really being a vital part of the city. Um, and I thought that was a really interesting thought process that should be explored in those conversations. Um, and then I think that was the mainstay of what I heard in feedback. I did have a few other areas of questions. Um, I, with, with the nonprofit group involvement, do we have examples of the nonprofits that are being invited into this conversation? And do we know if we have a balance of representation of thoughts within those groups that are participating and being invited?
Yeah, that's a great question. The nonprofits that we had envisioned being part of this were ones that are on the corridor. So it's, it's kind of a surprising number of nonprofit organizations that are up and down the corridor. So we just didn't want them to feel excluded when we said the businesses.
Got it.
So, so it's not necessarily, you know, I don't think change the trend necessarily as a coalition of, you know, nonprofits throughout tri-cities. I don't think that they're necessarily, um, a direct partner, but rather maybe members of Change the Trend and other types of nonprofits that are in the corridor.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, and what was my other question? Uh, anywhere in the strategy areas? I, I had another conversation with a, a resident that, um, brought forward the idea of potentially working on the increase of safety, but also beautification of the area through having lights across Broadway. Is that something that we could consider in one of these strategy groups? Um, I don't know if it would fall in public arc, art, or some other area, but I really like the idea of that, um, you know, with pops throughout the corridor. And I def- definitely think it could speak to some of the safety concerns.
Yeah, that's a great, um, point. And definitely something we've kind of, we haven't played up enough when we've talked about Complete Streets, bringing that, is that there's a lot of pedestrian lighting that's being added. And to your point about kind of consistency, there are actually the same, same light poles that are used in downtown. So, um, you know, we really want that kind of consistency, um, through there. But yeah, it's a significant amount of lighting, particularly in the areas where the full bounds in those new, the revised bus stop, the improved bus stops are going to be a lot more lighting.
Yeah, just to clarify, the resident was talking about stringing them across the street.
Right.
Like we see in some cities, and I think that's
Yeah, it's a really interesting, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, potentially we could explore that idea. And then lastly, um, I want to clarify to the public, I'm excited about this project. Uh, we did receive some feedback and I had wonderful conversation with, uh, someone that emailed us who, uh, wasn't happy with some of the comments that were made. I love a lot of this project. I do appreciate you coming back and saying that the housing piece will happen in parallel to this project. So it's not excluded from, and we can address all of the concerns that Member Anderson brought up around economic development and it needs to be hand in hand. Um, I do believe that it's appropriate to have it be a separate and parallel process, um, not only for the affordable housing piece, but also what are we calling this corridor? And, and how do we, or don't we want to densify? Um, and so with that piece, I, I would like to see housing come back in as a parallel to this conversation. Um, but I, I am curious about the executive order that was issued by Governor Polis, I think on Friday, um, around some of the land use legislation and the suggestion that cities will no longer be eligible for grant funds around transportation and other pieces, um, and what impacts that potentially would have? Um, and what kind of pressure does that put this council under to finish those housing conversations and get some decisions made?
If it's all right with you, Member Prang, can I make that a council request? Because I think, yeah.
Thank you, Member Prang. Member Noonan Kim.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, City Manager, for the update and answering all of the questions. Um, a few points of feedback that you're asking for is, um, I remain really excited about everything in the plan. I still support all the strategies that are here. Um, I hear Member Ward's concern about redevelopment. I think the challenge I'm having is that we know what happens if we do nothing. It's what we have now, which is what we, we don't have what I would call a vital corridor. We don't have a space that's really promoting new businesses and pedestrian, uh, traffic to those businesses. And so partnering with local businesses who maybe are interested or where there are vacancies where we can actually attract, uh, private partnerships in that area, not in any way that would threaten private property or threaten local businesses, but in a true partnership, I think is something really powerful that that corridor could really use, which is why I still support it, maybe from a slightly different perspective than you have. Um, I wasn't able to make it to the open house, but I have had several conversations with, uh, community stakeholders since then. The thing that I'm hearing the most consistently is pedestrian safety. And I do see that under obviously Complete Streets. But I've also heard requests, I know this is quite challenging, but for more crosswalks, especially to, um, uh, places that people want to go. Places like restaurants and bars where people want to be able to walk from their home. Because we have some of those really long blocks, it's tricky for people to get there and they end up not going because they can't walk. And so how do we think about maybe some creative ways, uh, to increase safety? I think we've seen a lot of success with the Hawk Signal, um, on the upper part of Broadway. So those are some of the things I'm hearing. Um, I also really appreciate Member Prang's, uh, just voice of enthusiasm for the project. I, I think it's always a balance of when do we, obviously we want to be thoughtful and ask questions, and that's our job. But also our words on this die is for setting the tone, not only for the community, but for potential partners. They're not going to be excited about this project if we're not excited about the project and if we don't show a commitment to it while we're asking those questions. And so I think having that balance is so, so, so important. And I think when I, you know, when we look forward and say like, what does success look like for a project like this? I would love to say that we have a shared vision for this part of our community. Um, right now, I don't think we have really any vision for it. Um, and I, I think that there's an opportunity for the city to really lead. Um, not, and when I say city, I don't just mean the city council, I mean with our community stakeholders. Um, and I think what this area needs is a moment of leadership, a moment of real vision that we can craft together. Um, obviously, we don't want to get out ahead of anyone. We don't want to brand it without all of our, you know, appropriate stakeholders. But how do we create an opportunity where we can come together, have these important conversations, set a big, bold, audacious vision for the space that draws people in and make this a place that people want to be over the next, you know, decade for our community? So I'm really excited about it, happy to weigh in to the extent that it's helpful, but I really want to listen more than I speak on this one.
I'm going to go to Member Russell since she hasn't had a chance to speak yet. But Member Russell, then we go to Mayor Protem and then Member Wright.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, I, um, I just want to thank, uh, the City Manager for the presentation this evening because it was way more toned back. And I appreciate staff listening, um, to City Council. And, um, I, I do appreciate Councilmember Prang's, um, estimation that we need to have a conversation. So there has to be opposing viewpoints if you're going to get to where we all can agree and represent the public as well. Um, I did, I was able to go to the, um, the event and I, I do appreciate it. Um, I, I was a little bit disappointed at the time, but, um, because I felt like we were just moving forward, um, without. And I had a conversation with City Manager the day after our last meeting. And the one piece that I think we are missing, because most of Broad- the Broadway corridor from Jefferson all the way to Bellevue is privately owned by businesses. And I believe that the businesses are the biggest stakeholder in that property. And what I suggested to the City Manager, and I know that when the ACE Committee was still around, the ACE Committee would have done this. They would go into the businesses, talk to them about what is it that, that the city can do for you? Uh, I kind of feel like we have this whole process backwards. We're deciding what our vision is, and then we're going to take it to, and there are business owners that have been there for decades. And I believe, uh, I mean, when, um, Mayor Protem says, bring it back to life. Well, I'd like to know what bring it back to life looks like. Has it ever been alive since you've lived here? Um, you don't have to answer that. But, um, I just think that we need to get the, the main stakeholders, which is the business owners, and find out what is it that they need. I would, um, I don't, I think maybe this partly was Darren Hollingsworth's job. He would go into businesses and work with them and just, um, strike up a conversation. Um, there is a problem, I, I mean, the chamber has a different focus than the city does. And so I really think it needs to be city staff that is going into these businesses and saying, what is it that we can do to help you? Um, instead of saying, this is what we're gonna do and we want you to follow us. Um, the, the lighting piece, I think that's a great idea, but I think we need to make sure that all the lighting to provide safety is focused downward so it doesn't shine out into the neighborhoods. Um, because I, you met the one lady that I've been talking to, but there are other people that are concerned about the lighting in the business area. Um, I too am excited about moving forward, but I want to do it right. Um, and, and I do think we, council needs to be aware, how much money do we actually have to spend on this? And, and one other thing, I think that would have helped, I appreciated you sharing those dates today, um, of when these things were passed, but that should have been put in previous council action. And it may have toned down some of the, uh, you know, it's kind of like, oh, city staff is moving forward with this. And, um, but that's what that, um, piece is there for. I appreciate that. Um, I think that's all that I have to say right now. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Um, I will respond, Councilmember Russell. The, I, I think there are real, some pockets of life going on on South Broadway now. And I, I don't know if we're, you know, if, if a short-term vision to bring the whole corridor into a bustling, thriving, commercial corridor is maybe the aim. But if we could get two or, you know, two or three blocks along there that already have a lot going on to be those thriving kind of blocks, I think that would be tremendous to see. Um, the, um, and, and the other thing you see along there is like several blocks that have a really good bone. Like you could tell that they were once really thriving places because of the, the nature of the built environment there. Uh, but a lot of those buildings are now vacant. So those are the areas that I would like to really see, um, really see focused on, especially. On the housing piece, um, thank you for weighing in on that, Member Prang. And I appreciate that, that everybody, you know, has some vision for, for addressing the housing piece somehow. I, whether we do it within this project or not, I wasn't really clear after watching that meeting whether there were four really opposed to the housing component of that or not. Um, maybe there are, but, uh, the, uh, having, I don't think the, the Affordable Housing Task Force is the right place to have a discussion about the economic development impacts of housing, uh, market, you know, market market, you know, market-based housing along a commercial corridor. That's just a slightly different conversation. I think it makes a lot of sense to do it in this, within this project, but if we need to break it out as a separate, parallel project and cover the whole, you know, what's our, how do, how do housing and commercial development, economic development fit together within the city and what's our strategy for that? That is a conversation I would like to have.
Member Wright.
Thank you. First of all, I will always be transparent in what citizens bring to me and I say, especially if it's new citizens. And I want to clarify, I never said that the city was bringing something forward, it was confusion and I was clarifying it with them. So if this council's not understanding what I was saying, I think we have a communication issue. The next thing is, I'm confused about the South Broadway and housing. You get off Broadway and we have housing east and west of it. And like I believe it's been stated by multiple people, everything on Broadway is privately owned. So I think there's a big discussion on what to do with those properties. I have offered to knock on the doors of those businesses and ask them, what can we do to help? I've offered to do it as council member myself. I meet with the City Manager tomorrow and I'll ask him again, can I knock on those doors and what do I need to do? And maybe that could help get started on some of this. I know that there are many grants and stuff available, and I think a lot of this could get going by personal outreach to these business owners. I think a lot of what we need to do is build trust with the business owners. And maybe just outreach, and if other council members are willing to meet with some of these business owners and say, hey, this is what we're looking at, how can we help your business, what can we do? And maybe this should have been done 10, 15, 20 years ago, we wouldn't be at where we are now. So I think those are some of the things that we need to think about, too. If we're constantly building a relationship with these businesses, like we do with residents, and just constantly nurture those relationships, Broadway wouldn't be where it is now. So I will, you know, offer that again and do what we can to help build and foster that relationship. I have more questions, but I know this will come up again. And I see the time, so I'll leave it there.
Member Ward.
I wanted to take some time to recognize the addition of safety to this strategy. I think it's critically important, and I appreciate that it did get added there. Somewhat regretful that I didn't think of it myself, but I'm glad it's there. The other thing I did that does raise a little curiosity for me is the signature event plan. And I'll, I'll say to start that I was pretty skeptical about the block party, which was instituted prior to my coming on to council. But when I hear signature event in the South Broadway corridor, I think about the closure of Broadway. And that still feels to me like a stunt, that we are lucky we have not had a worst reaction for doing once a year. And I feel like we would be, really be pressing our luck if we did it twice a year. So as, as much as that could be driven towards some sort of walking event, and perhaps we could keep through traffic remaining and maybe add some traffic control enhanced in the area, but leave Broadway open while the event's taking on or going on, that would be something that I could potentially support if we focused it on an area, as Member Anderson has alluded to, starting with an area that's just a few blocks, that's a focus area that seems to be doing relatively well now, but could perhaps use a little help or some more attention. That would be something that I think I could probably get behind. But a closure of Broadway, I would, I would still have a really hard time swallowing. So I wanted to go on record with that, and you probably know I'm the council minority on this, so maybe my opinion doesn't matter, but I wanted to state it anyway.
Thank you, Member Ward. Go ahead, Member Russell.
I just would like to weigh in on that as well, because I've actually heard some feedback from some of the people down there. They're not really interested in having a signature event down there. So I think I could get behind, behind that. I think down there, having a signature event with like the block party, it, they're concerned that it would create problems into the neighborhood with parking and, and maybe people inebriated going into the neighborhoods, and there is some concern about that. So, thank you.
Sean, just a couple of things for me that I, I don't, well, it hasn't been covered tonight, so a couple of the areas that I was wondering where they actually fall, one of them is infrastructure. So it seems like it might be a couple of different areas, and I kind of saw some wording around redevelopment or under the redevelopment section, but also under complete streets. I'm just wanting to make sure that we cover that aspect of it, especially since, you know, aspects of South Broadway have flooded in the past, where exactly we're going to be covering the infrastructure. Since we, since we're talking about complete streets as well, and Brad is well aware of this one as well, but just the, you know, when it does come time to doing actual construction on the roads, obviously, we implemented some sort of grant program on the Complete Streets project within Hampton. How are we gonna, you know, are these the right time to kind of engage the stakeholders about potentially what that may look like if we were to start doing construction, you know, south of Hampton to Bellevue? So those are the two areas I think that we, that I want to make sure that we cover as well. It's kind of funny, the, when we're talking about events, signature events, it never crossed my mind that we were actually thinking about closing South Broadway. I just thought that there were specific areas within South Broadway that kind of, it made sense to, you know, on one side of the road, actually having a signature event that may be smaller, much smaller scale than what an Inglewood block party would be. That's the way that I foresaw it, I'm not sure if members of, the stakeholders of South Broadway actually see something a little bit bigger, that's what I foresaw when I was thinking about any type of events that would occur down there. I think just about everything else has been covered tonight by my member council member, so I'll just leave it at that. See if there's any other questions, Member Russell, did you have another?
Actually, you brought up a good point that I really hadn't thought about, in the infrastructure and the storm drainage. I will tell you, after the flood, I've lived here for a long time, and I lived in District Three and drove down Broadway all the time. I never saw the flooding problem until after that woman died. And I was driving down Broadway south from Jefferson, and you get to Quincy and all of a sudden it starts going downhill until you get to Tufts, just past Tufts, and then it starts going uphill all the way to Broadway. So I don't want the bulbouts to impede the storm drainage in that area. So I think that may be something that, maybe there's other things we need to do to slow down the traffic rather than bulbouts. So I just would like us to make sure we consider that. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments from members of council? Good lively discussion tonight. All right, so Sean, I think that that is that. Do we have any other sessions upcoming on this item, or are we good for the short term?
We don't have anything on the calendar yet, but Tim will be working with the different committees and finding out kind of what their timeframe of coming up with recommendations for their specific areas of the stakeholder groups will be, and then scheduling something quickly. But we will not be, you know, finishing this up and then coming to council. We want to get some maybe preliminary, what we, what we're seeing and hearing consensus on from members of the public on these, and then bring those back and kind of test them with council, find out what, you know, can, you do and don't care for with regard to those, and then go back and make that kind of an iterative process, is the way Deputy City Manager Dodd has described that to me, and I know our communications team supports that as well.
Perfect. Well, Sean, thank you very much to you, to staff for the quick changes that were made based on feedback from council from the last session. Really appreciate it. With that, everyone, we are going to take a short break. We'll start off the meeting here at the top of the hour, so we got about a four-minute break. See you everyone soon.
Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, everyone, I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, if you please take your call.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Prang.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
With the record show, all seven members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, the minutes from the regular city council meeting from May 5th. Any changes to the minutes? See, now can I get a motion to approve the minutes from May 5th?
Move to approve the minutes from May 5th.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
With the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. We are tabling Agenda Item 6, the recognition of Inglewood as a 2025 All-American City finalist to a later date. So that moves us on to Agenda Item 7. This is a resolution appointing members to various boards, commissions, and committees. Everyone, we did a fine job, fine job of basically placing many of the applicants on boards. There was one that is currently blank. I think we just had a stillmate of three to three for the Downtown Development Authority. So we did have two members. We had Mr. Renshaw and Mr. Phillips for the South Broadway area. I think we were at three to three. I'm still fine with my continued vote. Obviously, both were very... I'm very interested in both candidates serving within the DDA, but only one can serve. So I'll be fine keeping my vote as is. Not sure if anybody else wants to say anything different there, but go ahead, Member Russell.
I would like to keep my vote the way it is too, but I'm kind of wondering if we should pull just the DDA out and approve the rest and then...
And then come back and discuss it. Yeah, I think that that is a fine idea. So, all right, can I get a motion to approve the board and commission without not, without currently nominating somebody for the DDA Board? We'll handle that separately.
So move. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any comments? All right, can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
With the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving back to the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority, there are three slots available. We have two regular members that we did settle on, Mr. Carr as well as Mr. Gastes. So just taking any comments or any changes to the regular member for the South Broadway area. Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for missing the interviews. It's one of my favorite nights of the year, but unfortunately, I had a work conflict. But I did listen to the interviews and the recording. You all did a wonderful job, heading wonderful placements for everyone. After listening to both, I agree with what I heard in your deliberations. This was a very hard decision. They're both seem to be very qualified. But I would like to vote for Mr. Phillips for this seat, and that's because Ms. Zerkey, who co-owns the Inglewood Grand, is rolling off of the EDDA, which means we don't actually have a front-facing business or a restaurateur from that Broadway corridor on the EDDA moving forward. And that feels like a really important voice to be represented, and we do have some other development and kind of construction voices on the EDDA moving forward. So that's why I think to keep the group diverse and representing the businesses in that area, I'd like to see Mr. Phillips.
Thank you very much, Member Noonan Camp. Member Wright, go ahead.
Member Noonan Camp, is that person currently on and will be leaving?
Ms. Zerkey? Yes, she is, I believe, rolling off next month.
Okay.
And so that would mean we wouldn't have any restaurant or bar on the South Broadway stretch.
Okay, so I'm not going to base my decision on something that's going to happen, because I didn't know that. Mr. Renshaw, just looking at his application, he's currently attending the meetings. He's been attending them. And I believe he was attending other meetings, just to, no, I believe it was the chamber events, the meetings. So because he's already, he said nothing official, I've just been attending meetings to understand what's going on. Based on that, and I believe that Mr. Phillips attended one meeting. So I believe because Mr. Renshaw's already been committed and attended meetings, and then some of the dedication that the business he works for, that they've committed to, that's who I'm supporting and I will be voting for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I think we do have four to three right now in terms of just Mr. Joe Phillips as the third regular member. Mayor Pro Tim, do you have something to add?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to appoint Joe Phillips to the DDA Board.
Actually, I think the motion is to just list off all three, so, because we stripped out the entire DDA.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's... I move to appoint Thomas Carr, George Gastes, and Joe Phillips to the EDDA.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any further comments? All right, that's... Sorry, go ahead, Member Russell.
Yes, I actually appreciate all of these applicants, and I think they all did a fine job. I believe that Mr. Renshaw is better, in my estimation, for what the Board is doing right now. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Even though I didn't have, well, I like both candidates. Even though I prefer the other candidate at this time, I'm still going to support this motion. Motion, I'm hoping that Mr. Renshaw continues to participate in the DDA meetings. I know that he's a member of the Chamber as well, but just love having that voice within the community participating throughout. So I will be in support of the motion appointing Joe Phillips, George, and Thomas to the Board. All right, and with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Nay.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
With the record show, six ayes, one nay. Item is passed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, everyone. This is recognition of public comments, so this is an opportunity to address city council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and please limit your presentation to three minutes. I see that everyone did list their addresses within the sheet. And I think that there's a couple of speakers here tonight that have not spoken over the last 90 days, so they will be the first to speak tonight. All right, and with that, let me find my sheet. I think the first speaker is online. So we have Sarah Odile with the District 2 resident. And do we have her online?
Yeah, I'm here.
Good evening, Sarah. When you are ready, you may begin.
So on January 7th, my childhood home and great-grandfather's home was condemned on Inca and Mansfield by code enforcement, police, and the fire department. Not only do my grandfather and I feel like we are losing a longtime home that generations of our family grew up in, but also beloved heirlooms from generations back, family pictures, legal papers, my grandfather's personal belongings. No one has been allowed to take anything out of the home except for my mother, who needed her credentials. Even then, she was not allowed to step foot on the property. From my perspective, this is seemingly because of my younger brother's reckless decisions, demeanor, and so-called friends. My grandpa is of sound mind and did need rehabilitation after a dog attacked him, who he was not the owner of. His father and his grandpa, as well as his wife's father, served this country in World War I and World War II. His father was honorably discharged due to injury. Grandpa worked 50 years for Norgren, building pneumatic valves and fluid control devices for HVAC, as well as blast protection and various military equipment and systems. He comes from a family who has been here since the Mayflower. I believe our family may have been Irish that left Ireland in the early 1600s to get away from persecution of the English crown. His family, his wife's family, as vulgar Germans, sought safety in Nebraska and later settled into Colorado to freedom. And now the city wants to take his home. When is the city going to get proper, get him proper representation? As I heard Councilmember Kim Wright request at the last meeting, I humbly ask that the city consider that they are punishing an at-risk elderly man for the shortcomings of his 22-year-old great-grandson and those associated with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, for your time tonight. Any questions from council? See, go ahead, Member Wright.
Sarah, this is Councilmember Wright. Has anybody contacted you regarding getting counsel for your grandfather?
No. No one has contacted me.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right. Sarah, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next speaker. It's Kathleen Bailey, District 3 resident. Four. Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Bailey, when you are ready, you may begin.
Kathleen Bailey, District 4. Tonight's study session calmed a number of my concerns. However, my confusion is how to separate staff's transit-oriented city plan and the South Broadway revitalization plan. Up on the big screen is a photo of Community Development's official City of Inglewood Comprehensive Plan land use and testimony map, created with the adoption of the Inglewood Forward Comprehensive Plan. This map lays out the massive scope of Community Development's plan to actually rebuild our city into a transit-oriented city, which is a very specific formula. In fact, most of the massive apartment complexes currently going up on previous commercial and light industrial properties are part of the implementation of this plan. And the scraping and replacing of single-family homes with massive pyplexes is still going on near the North Broadway corridor. How do you have separate plans, and how do I, as a resident, understand how to differentiate and what to expect? I presume the South Broadway revitalization plan will also benefit the ultimate TOC plan, which is the ultimate plan. That's your staff's plan. And in that plan, the red color-coded areas on the map along both sides of Broadway are targeted to be redeveloped with massive apartment complexes. At least, that is the normal TOC. The orange-colored areas, that no one's going to argue about what's on plan for that, are on both sides of Broadway, are targeted to be redeveloped with high-density smaller apartments and other Codex High Density designs. The yellow color-coded areas along both sides of Broadway are targeted to be redeveloped with lower-profile Codex High Density redevelopment in R1, something that was promised you guys would not touch. The gray area, the gray color-coded area are simply remaining single-family residential areas and other existing structures that the city is not currently targeting for high-density development. All of this gives me heartburn. You guys seem to be in today's pace. You're working on a major part of the corridor that's up there, only you've got it down to a tiny little significantly different, smaller focus, which is not related up there. Are you guys planning on canceling the TOC?
Anything else, Ms. Bailey? I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Ms. Bailey, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Ms. Bailey? See, now, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Gary Kozak, a District 3 resident. And actually, I will be giving a response, District 4, I know I'm just off tonight. Mr. Kozak, thank you very much for your time. I will be providing a response to public comments tonight, so.
Thank you. Gary Kozak, District 4. Sorry I had to leave last time. I'm here to address 1300 West Oxford, where I had complained about them having their actual foundation fractured and stuff. And what went on there, it's now been four weeks and nobody's ever bothered to contact. This is very disturbing because it is a safety factor. And in further study, there's a possibility that his sewer line got fractured in the matter of them driving those steel plates down into the ground. Then I'm going to turn to the factor of South Broadway. I am going to be one of the members on one of the committees or several other committees. The property we're standing on right now used to be a huge park that drew people from all over the country, all over the state would come in because we had such a huge park here and stuff. We gave that up to Cinderella City with an agreement that there would be several small parks throughout the city of Inglewood that would accommodate where they could go play ball, we could go set up and have a baseball team or a softball team, soccer games and all this. Well, now you're taking those away and making them into dog parks, where we can't even do that. We gave up away the fairgrounds, which was really a stupid move, because how crowded they are and how many people they draw to that area, we gave that up. And now we're having some struggles going on with softball side of the field, have some complaints. I talked on city council to try to bring a Waterworld here, because the other Waterworld was going so great. I know the owner of the other Waterworld. That would have been a great draw here that we could have had, but no, we got rid of that. We continue to get rid of things. If you want this to become a city that's been drawn to, when Cinderella City was here, we were known all over the world drawing people here. You got to get something that will draw people here. You got rid of the lumberyard that we were going to have here. The one that is working right now is a climbing venue over there. They're working great. Their parking lot's full all the time. But now, just down my street, real quick, over half my houses are rentals. We got to remember when you're going on these plans that we've got to help support the school system, because if that continues to diminish in numbers, then you're not going to have anybody else wanting to come to Inglewood. So we've really got to consider that. Lastly, I want to thank the police department for putting a radar on the Pan Street. We're having semis, we're having cement trucks fully loaded with cement going up the Pan Street, and I guarantee you, it's destroying that street, hundreds of them. All the cement going into the development of SAMs, every one of those cement trucks is going up the Pan.
Mr. Kozak, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for your time tonight, Mr. Kozak. Any questions? See, now, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Rebecca Kramer, a District 2 resident. Good evening, Ms. Kramer. When you are ready, you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I had just a few comments and questions tonight on the South Broadway project. I went over the study session materials earlier this morning. I would like to thank the mayor for bringing up infrastructure. I've been speaking to infrastructure and the lack of updated infrastructure since Codex started in front of this council. I had a couple of questions. The report addressed bus stops and updating 40 bus stops. My understanding from previous council meetings is that ridership is down. Paint won't improve safety. And I don't know how much this is going to cost the taxpayers, but shouldn't that be a step in the decision-making to update 40 bus stops if we're, update 40 bus stops if we're not going to, if they're not being utilized? The presentation also mentions increasing crosswalks. Increasing crosswalks just increases the opportunity for pedestrian and vehicle accidents. I think there were six this weekend in different parts of the city. Pedestrians, these days, have no respect for vehicles. You can be right as long as you want to, but the vehicle weighs 3,000 pounds and the pedestrian weighs 100 pounds, and the vehicle's going to win in the conflict. So I drive all over town, and I observe people crossing the streets with, they don't look left, they don't look right, they don't look left again. They can't be bothered to walk to an intersection with a light. I see it with the kids from Bishop, I see it with individuals on Broadway. People need to learn to use the traffic lights as they were created. I am unclear on the meaning of size of corridor. The number of cars can be an opportunity. I have no idea what that is alluding to. It's in the report. It just isn't very nondescriptive. The report mentions public amenities, activities for children's and families. Isn't this why we're spending $73 million on the parks? People should conduct their activities with their children away from major streets, not playing on major streets. And my $73 million should assist them at all of the parks doing that. I would ask that the plan designs and the public comments, including the post it's been brought to outside the council chambers and displayed before the meetings, so that the people that are showing up can have a chance to see what those look like. And as far as the corridor and the houses from Grant to Cherokee, I don't know what happened. We talk all the time about our need for middle-market housing. This is our middle-market housing. And if we're going to go through there and get rid of the middle-market housing only to put up greater densification in apartments, we're stabbing ourselves in the foot. I just think it's stupid. I've spoken with many of my friends that live along this corridor, mainly on the west side, and they're concerned about parking and overdensification in their neighborhoods. Their biggest concern right now is safety and the lack of safety. The project...
Ms. Kramer, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Ms. Kramer, any questions? I have one question. Your comment regarding Grant to Cherokee, was that based off the map that Ms. Bailey showed as well?
The, what was it?
From Grant to Cherokee?
Yeah, three blocks on each side is what is scoped out for the change in density. And that is served by middle-market housing at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification on that. I see no further questions. Ms. Kramer, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Regan Benson, a citizen from outside Inglewood.
Did you hear? You got served! Boom! We're going to change the walkability score of Inglewood. We're going to start tonight. How's that sound? Here are the defendants in the 2025 lawsuit. Tamara Niles, Othaniel Sierra, Joe Anderson, Sergio Renteria, Bethany Lafferty, Corinne Barnett, Jean Mulder, Erin Glee, and Sean Lewis. How does it feel? Remember the stupid little thing you had to say, Joe? What was this, about how I was wasting my life? Now we're going to watch you get to waste yours, aren't we? I told you you weren't going to be mayor. You ain't even going to get re-elected. Because guess what? People aren't going to like this million-dollar lawsuit, dumb shits. They're not. They're not. I don't care how many frickin' apartments you build. And you're still not listening to me. Crystal's still out here, nowhere to go. You got old Sean and Tamara over here, just, you know, playing frickin' cornhole-y with each other while Crystal's out here being chased by the cops. Giggle, giggle, Sean. You idiot. You're an idiot. You're an indecent human being. You are an idiot. And now you're getting sued. You and that bimbo over there. You two are the dumbest people in this entire city, coupled by these two morons. And you just cheer each other on. Tamara, you couldn't even work for a frickin' collection agency. You're a dipshit. You suck at being an attorney. Don't you get that? Quit. Jamie is going to mop your frickin' floor. She's going to make you cry repeatedly. You guys have done the dumbest stuff any city could ever, ever do. And you just thought I was just going to go away. Do you know how much money this is going to cost? We're talking a couple million bucks. Because they didn't want me to use the library bathroom. Because I advocate for homeless people. Because those two dipshits back there drum up criminal case after criminal case that gets dismissed. This is going to cost you guys millions of dollars. And you guys can't even get the taste of your water right. I mean, when do you go enough is enough? But at any rate, here's the lawsuit. You guys got to read it. It's golden. Here's one copy for y'all. Make copies. I look forward to seeing you in depositions. You're all going to scatter like cockroaches.
Regan, your three minutes are up. Regan, your three minutes are up. Ms. Benson, you've been asked to, your three minutes have been exceeded. Any questions for Regan? See you none. Moving on to the next speaker. Idem May Nichols, District 4 resident. Good evening, Idem May. When you are ready to speak, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Cherry Lynn. I was hoping, and maybe that this comes true, since we have all the brochures for downtown Inglewood, Cherry Lynn has been left out a lot of times with things that have gone on in this city. And I've talked to a lot of the business people there, and I've got a lot of, in case we do do another brochure, and I've already got quite a few stories that I've gone in and gotten. And I was hoping that sometime I could bring the stories so that perhaps that we could do another literature thing on Cherry Lynn. Cherry Lynn had a post office before Inglewood did. And so many businesses there now are, they're new people. They don't know too much about Cherry Lynn. And they like being there. And then there are a few others that are very upset because they've always been ignored. And they say they do everything for down in Inglewood, but nothing for Cherry Lynn. So I'm just hoping that sometime we can get enough. And I don't know, maybe you've got it on your agenda. I don't know. But I would like, at some point, that we could do a brochure on Cherry Lynn. And that's pretty much what I have to say. I wanted to say that for a long time. And I thought, I need to get a little ammunition first by talking to the people and getting stories. And so that's what I've been doing. So I hope that one of these days, those people can be recognized. And like I say, the people that are there now, a lot of them don't know anything too much about Cherry Lynn. But maybe you'll read some of my stories if I send them to you. So thank you very much.
Ms. Nichols, thank you very much for coming tonight. Member Russell has a question.
So I do have a question. So where is Cherry Lynn? Is it down by Cherry Lynn School? And is it like a section of Broadway or?
Well, it, I start from about Quincy on and a little to the south, and a little bit of Quincy to the north, but not too much. Because in the old days, there was nothing, there was no buildings between Inglewood and Cherry Lynn. And that's why they had the little cart to carry people up to Cherry Lynn. And the people living in Cherry Lynn, they could take down to Inglewood to shop for clothes and that kind of thing. And so that's all filled up. But I had heard at one time, from 285 on, they want to do things, clear up until Cherry Lynn and beyond. But I didn't know who was involved in that, if you're involved in that, or some other people involved in that. And anyhow, the little bit I heard was very encouraging, and I liked it. And so I just want to know if they're going to do something. I have some stories for.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Nichols, actually, I have a question because I'm trying to figure out, where exactly would, where is it that you're trying to tell these stories? You keep mentioning us, the city. Is there, is it like within the Citizen Magazine? Is it online through some of the--
You mean some of the things, some of the information I've gotten?
Okay.
Well, some of it is a great big book.
Right.
And some of the stories I've gotten from the, you know--
Right.
But, and some are disappointed and some don't know anything about Cherry Lynn at all, so.
So I guess more of my question is, how would you like to broadcast the stories? I think that's what I'm--
How would I like to what?
Broadcast the stories. How would you like to disseminate that information to, you know, greater Inglewood?
You know, I don't know.
Is that for us? Oh, okay.
Yeah. I just heard that they were going to do things from the, you know, clear up in that whole area. And I wanted people to know that I've just been working on it and hoping something would happen.
I got it, Ms. Nichols. Thank you very much for that clarification.
So is some of that through Historic Inglewood? I mean, that book that you have, the history book that I've seen is through, I mean, it was Inglewood Historic Preservation Society at the time.
Yes, yes.
And so have you done any talks at Historic Inglewood about Cherry Lynn?
Have I had what?
Any done any talks?
At Cherry Lynn? Oh, no.
No, no, no. At the Historic, Historic Inglewood. You know, don't you have programs?
Yes, every month, we have a program.
Okay.
And we really have it showcase Cherry Lynn. And so that's what has been my desire, that we do do that.
Okay.
But I have other people to solve the problem with.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Nichols, I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I think the last name on the list is David Wang. You're a District 1 resident, or maybe District 3, you're right on the border, it looks like. Good evening, Mr. Wang. When you are ready, you may begin.
Hi. Let's see. I moved to Inglewood two years ago, and, past two years, I've just suffered from a lot of different problems from, with like Alzheimer's-related symptoms, fatigue. And it was only after like two years of research that I've discovered that Colorado's entire Denver metro area's 5G network has like their macro cells based at the edge of Inglewood. And as an electro-hypersensitive person, that accounts for 3% of the population. To give some context, what that is, is it's like a sixth sense, where I can actually sense like electromagnetic waves, which is really common among animals for like navigation, but like among humans, it's not very common. Like some other example would be like, I'm red-green colorblind, so I perceive the world differently than other people. I'm able to sense like the presence of that and then be more sensitive to that, but doesn't mean that it's not going to affect other members of the Inglewood community. So I'm just drawing attention to what I believe will be the next biggest health crisis for the coming decade for the globe. And it's starting, will probably start in Inglewood because Denver is like one of the first cities in the entire world to embrace the ubiquitous nature of 5G. And Inglewood is where all of Denver metro area's 5G network is based at. So like I have, other residents are able to afford thousands of dollars for like different measuring equipment to test different areas. But I'm just, first want to draw attention to the levels of radiation, the non-ionizing radiation, all the Inglewood residents who work and live in the area are being exposed to, and hopefully correlate that to rising levels of like perhaps infertility, decreasing vision, cancers like leukemia, Alzheimer's symptoms, and other things. And I hope that I can help, even though the FCC doesn't allow cities to have any say on where cell towers are placed. How it works is like the macro cell towers are the most powerful ones. And so if a kid wants to watch a music video on a soccer field in Lone Tree or Bloomfield, all the data is passing through high-powered waves from Inglewood residents, through the bodies of Inglewood residents, to small cells in their local area.
Mr. Wang, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. We do have a question for you. Member Russell, go ahead.
I'm just curious, is it coming from a tower? Or how can it all be coming from Inglewood?
Oh, there are like around 24 different towers placed in Inglewood by that Costco shopping center. And that feels like all the 5G--
So the Costco--
--city.
The Costco shopping center on the other side of Santa Fe?
Yeah.
Okay, that's actually Sheridan.
Doesn't, okay, so it's not--
Because I think Inglewood, do we only have one, is there only one? They told us that, which is over at Galapego and--
We could take, yeah, we could. That's my question in a second. Thank you, Member Russell. Member Ryan has a question as well.
All right, thank you.
That kind of blows my question. So you believe there's 24 cell sites in Inglewood or in this area? I mean, Inglewood's only six miles and Sheridan is what, two and a half miles, something like that? Or is it in this vicinity?
You can see them located by the, what's it called? The business center, some business center of the, it's like, you can recognize them, right? They're, they're very recognizable.
Well, and they disguise them like tree, put trees around them and stuff now also.
So yeah, in general, my point is 20 other cities are working with the FCC about like improving the health safety because it has like, from like France and other developed countries, they already have like better safety policies in place. And I just noticed that like our city, even though we have, we're basically the supporter--
You're off the plane border, I'm sorry.
--of all the other cities in Colorado.
The question from Council member Ryan has been asked and answered.
So I'll ask one more. Does this area have more cell towers than Denver does, which is much bigger? Do you know that?
We have the high-power cell towers that supports all of Denver.
Okay, okay, perfect. And what is the name of that book that you're reading?
This is called EMFD.
Okay, perfect.
It actually breaks down like why non-ionizing radiation still indirectly affects--
Okay, great.
--the human body.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any further questions from council? See you none. Mr. Wang, thank you very much for your time tonight.
All right, thanks.
All right, that concludes public comment for tonight. I'm giving a response tonight. So thank you very much for everyone coming and speaking tonight. Ms. Ordeal, thank you very much for coming and speaking. I got to go back and take a look at the response that we got after last week's session or two weeks ago. But I do recall that the house was a safety, there was a safety and health issue with the home. I'm not sure where that currently stands, but we'll take a look into that or I'll go back and look at the council request. And also provide a little bit more information about the public defender. So if we have to reach out to you to provide that information, we will. But, but yeah, I do know that some of that information was provided after the last conversation two weeks back. Ms. Bailey, thank you for coming to speaking tonight. I think what you brought up that evening or tonight was kind of the source of the concern that we had a couple of weeks back. What you were showing there was the TOD from the state. This city council has not passed a TOD that was mandated by the state as of yet. That's going to be part of the conversation we're going to have. You did correctly identify that South Broadway does allow density, and has allowed density as part of Codex even prior to that. But what you have, what you're showing there is that is not something that we have passed as a council. So I think, you know, part of the concern was just the fact that we may be putting the cart before the horse in terms of that discussion around housing for the South Broadway revitalization plan. But we will be discussing that here over the next few months in terms of what the TOD and what the state mandated as part of their land-use plan that was passed last year. So we'll continue to have those discussions in the coming months. Mr. Kozak, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. I know you brought it up to my attention about the foundation. I didn't realize you wanted us or have somebody from staff come and speak to you about that, but I will have somebody come and speak to you about that. And thank you very much for wanting to serve on the South Broadway committees. Any feedback is needed, especially if you may have a different idea than what us council members or other members of the public have. It's always good to get additional feedback. Ms. Kramer, thank you very much for bringing many of the items regarding the South Broadway. Yeah, in terms of the cost to the taxpayers for the bus stops, infrastructure obviously was a big thing that, you know, you've been speaking about it. I have a lot of thoughts on infrastructure as well for South Broadway. It just seems like a lot of that. So I'm hoping that you could be part of the committees that are part of that South Broadway as well. There we go. So yeah, just make it known because it does sound like you have ideas or at least concerns about the future of South Broadway. Let's see, Idem May, anytime you have Sherilyn stories or history about Inglewood, I want to hear about them, Idem May. So I'll get a little bit more details in terms of what that plan is for Sherilyn and how we can just bring a little bit more history to just whatever the plan is that we're doing with that area. I think it's just good regardless of whether we do have something scheduled for Sherilyn or just something that we want to share for the city. I'll speak to staff and just find out what the best way to get those stories out. But I want to hear them, whatever you happen to have, Idem May. So thank you. And David Wang, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. You correctly mentioned that we have limited ability to decide what we can do with 5G towers and, like you said, the smaller infrastructure that has gone in. We had the discussion a couple of years back because of citizen concern. Our hands are tied in terms of that aspect of it. So it's just been something that has been talked about by this council. We're very limited in what we're allowed to do with telecommunications in general. But I do thank you for coming and speaking about potential concerns that you happen to have on the technology. And at this point, I don't agree with the sentiment that you happen to have regarding 5G technology, but I'm always willing to learn more about the subject if there is additional findings on it. I'm always willing to change my mind on it. But I do appreciate you coming and speaking tonight. All right. And with that, anyone else? That concludes my public comments. I think you may have had a council request. Member Russell, go ahead.
Yes, I do have a council request on, on the properties down by Sam's, specifically the one that does have a cracked foundation. But can we, can the city look into perhaps if there's other cracked foundations down there and what we can do? I mean, if it was caused by Sam's, so just how we deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Ryan, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Kozak mentioned also, there was a concern of the sewer line being cracked also. Can we get someone out there to camera the sewer line to see if there's an issue with that sewer line also? Because if it's cracked, with my limited knowledge, it could start sinking down on itself, causing backups and other issues also. So the sooner it's confirmed it's okay or it's not, the better on both the foundational issues and the sewer. And I believe Mr. Kozak said that he was reporting this for a neighbor, not himself. So.
Thank you very much, Member Wright. Alright, and seeing no further comments, that concludes public comments. Everyone, we're gonna move to. There we are, we're moving on to consent agenda items. I just see one item pulled for tonight. Uh, it's nine eight two. Any other items that we need to pull for this evening? Alright, if not, can I get a motion to approve nine eight one and three, nine B one, two and three? And nine C, one, two, three, four, yeah, one, two, one, three, four.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
With the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Uh, moving back to nine eight two, the question is for uh, Chief Jackson, and I think Mem- uh, Member Russell, you happen to have the com- another question, excuse me.
Hello.
Good evening, Chief Jackson. Um, my question is, how does the acceptance of this grant, um, of these grant monies impact the sales and use tax we appropriate? To PD for alternative policing?
That's a great question and thank you. Uh, I, I, I might say it, it doesn't in the sense that it's already. A alternative policing expenditure, and so it will remain an alternative policing expenditure just in-house. The, this.
So will the grant monies be deducted before? I guess my concern is that um, I mean, what the Budget Advisory Committee has been talking about is specifically getting things that are. Alternative policing, so I mean, this is over two hundred plus thousand, right, for this?
Almost three hundred thousand, correct.
So how much um, how much does alternative policing cost us above that?
Yeah, uh, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand above that, so we have a, I have a spreadsheet right here. That lists out kind of itemizes how we use or, or how much it costs us uh, to respond to the um, uh, mental health. Addiction homeless issues that the alternative policing tax is for. And, and currently we're at about one point seven million that we spend on that. And the uh, the tax uh, covers about one point one million of that.
Okay, alright, I appreciate that. That answers my question. I have some other things that we could talk about, but it doesn't have to do with this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions, go ahead, Member Wright.
I do. Um, thank you. Thank you for being here, Chief. Um, I just had a thought, will this replace the All Health mobile unit?
Um, I don't think it will, uh, I want to be careful how I say it. It, it just, we're hoping that it just brings it in-house. So instead of um, at All Health, being funded and then coming to us, it would come directly to us and then. Uh, eventually we would bring those to be a police department employees.
Okay, so.
If I could add to that, Mayor? I, I think the mobile response unit is a separate contract with All Health, and so I think that's gonna remain funded by, I think they're mostly Medicaid is what that's.
Thank you for the clarification.
But so, so we're not bringing the MRU in-house, it's just the co-responders that are currently funded by All Health or through All Health. And so to Member Russell's question, it's, it's already being funded by the alternate placing tax. It's just going right now, our check is written to All Health. Now the state is gonna write us uh, the check for uh, that and then we pay the, I think we have some matching dollars for that.
I'm sorry, misunderstood, thank you.
Okay, so previously we had hired two people that had worked from All Health previously, didn't we?
No, we just brought the case manager in-house. Um, as of, uh, she's been on for a full year now, I think. Um, under, directly under the city, but you're right, that was a, a position that was under our contract with All Health. We were still paying for it, um, but we've now brought that in-house. So now this just brings the other two members of the co-responder team, case management team in-house. As opposed to through a contract with All Health.
Okay, so will we be hiring the people that currently do this while, for All Health? Will we be hiring them? Or will we be putting this out in either in hiring the most whoever?
I, I think at this point it would be our goal to hire the, the ones that are already there.
Okay.
I do think labor laws require us to post those jobs, but um, similar to the case manager, when we brought that in-house. We removed that from the All Health contract, opened it up as a position within the city of Inglewood. And then Emily Van Haig, who's our current case manager, applied for that and was by far the most qualified, and so she was put into the position. But I do think to your point, yes, we have to still post those positions and, you know, interview people um, and select the best candidate for those positions.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Right, any further questions? Alright, see you now, can I get a motion to approve nine eight two?
Move to approve ninety-two.
Thank you, Member Prang, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, any further comments? See you now, can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
With the record show, seven ayes.
Chief, thank you very much for your time. Uh, no public hearing items for tonight, moving on to eleven eight one, this is the city sales tax code update. We have Director of Finance, Kevin Ingles, and Tax Audit Supervisor, Kurt Osborne. Good evening, Mister Osborne.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Um, I'm Kurt Osborne, the Revenue and Tax Audit Manager for the city. Um, um, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Councilors, thank you for providing an opportunity to briefly discuss the proposed. Changes to the city's sales and use tax code for this first reading, changes previously discussed at your May fifth study session.
Do you have the clicker or is it this one right over here on the?
I think it's this one right here.
We have a clicker over on this table over here as well, might be that one. There we go.
There we go. Proposed changes will make the code easier for businesses to understand and to comply with, and will add clarity for city tax administrators. The proposed changes will further align Inglewood's sales tax system with those of other Colorado home rule cities. Without compromising Inglewood's home rule authority. The proposed changes amend and clarify definitions, taxation positions, exemptions and tax administration provisions. Primary examples of these clarifications include the definitions used to exempt medical supplies. And food for home consumption or groceries. Businesses and taxpayers will, will more easily avail themselves of these beneficial exemptions when these code changes are adopted. The pro- sorry. The proposed code change adds a definition of economic nexus that imposes the city's licensing and tax collection requirements on certain remote sellers. That do not otherwise have physical presence in the city. The proposed code change includes a def- now includes, after last uh, the study session discussion. Now includes a definition and an exemption of essential hygiene products. Such as menstruation products, diapers for infants and toddlers, and adult incontinent supplies. This proposed exemption and supporting materials were discussed by council in summer twenty twenty-four at a study session. And again at the May fifth study session. All proposed changes to the code are revenue neutral or slightly revenue negative. The essential hygiene products exemption will reduce city sales tax revenue by approximately one hundred and thirty to three hundred thousand per year. And that's the way we've modeled it. And the partial exemption on manufactured homes will only reduce revenues by approximately five to ten thousand dollars per year, city sales tax revenues. While no citizen vote is required under Tabor for changes that have a negative revenue impact on the city, Tabor would require a citizen vote. Should council seek to offset this revenue loss through future tax increases. Um, incidentally, this morning, the finance department received feedback from the municipal court staff about the proposed elimination. Of the penalty of imprisonment um, for violations of the sales tax code. And the cou- the court suggested not decriminalizing sales tax violations. Finance consulted with City Attorney Niles, who reminded me and the municipal court that Title One of the code. Authorizes the court to impose the penalty of imprisonment on any violation of the city code, including violations of the sales tax code. So the proposed elimination of this penalty from the sales tax code remains unchanged in your materials. And it's time open for questions.
Mister Osborne, thank you very much for the presentation. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, so my question, I have a few questions because in this. In this code itself, it seems like there is no penalty. I mean, it doesn't talk about jail in, in this um. In this ordinance at all. It doesn't, it seems to me it only talks about a hearing officer. Um.
I, I believe um, that there are two, there are two um, documents in your materials in addition to the slide deck. One is the code as it'll look when adopted, when updated. And the other one is the red line, and in that red, in that red line of the original code, there, there is a um, a penalty of imprisonment. And, and fines and um, other compliance, other, other kind of adverse actions the city can take. When a business doesn't file a tax return or pay a tax amount owed to the city.
In the red line version wasn't in this week's, it was in the original one. Um, the. I guess my, my confusion um, was. It, it, in just reading it, it seems like um. I mean, there are times when this goes into fraud or stealing. And is a hearing officer gonna decide that or is, are we just gonna start adding five hundred dollars per day? Um, if somebody's committed a crime, it needs to go to court and where is that at?
City Attorney Niles, it looks like you have.
Yes, I'm happy to take that question. Uh, under Inglewood Municipal Code one dash four dash one, it states that any violation of any portion of municipal code. Can subject a person to a fine for up to two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars or imprisonment for up to three hundred and sixty days or both. So that means that we have some options regarding enforcement. We could follow the administrative procedure. Um, and, and use a hearing officer and, and follow a civil route. Alternatively, we could file a cr- a criminal case in Inglewood Municipal Court. In which case, this general penalty provision is where the judge would um, obtain his authority to impose fines and potentially a jail sentence. Um, I, I find it highly unlikely that the city prosecutor would request a jail sentence for someone not filing a tax return or something, something like that. But every case is different, I don't know. So we don't need to include it in Title Four, Chapter Four, specific for sales tax. Because the authority is already there in Title One, which is administrative provisions applicable to all of municipal code.
So is there a link? Because I'm assuming that people that are just concerned about sales tax and what they're being charged. Would only go to this section of the code and not go back. So is there a way to link that with um. With Title One?
Uh, it's not necessarily, not necessary to specifically link it or to refer to it. Because Title One on its face, it says general penalty. And it then discusses the general penalty for any violation of any provision of municipal code can fall under, under that. So it's not necessary, just like we don't refer to EMC one dash four dash one in every other chapter and title of municipal code. It just applies to everything. However, we certainly can refer to it, but legally it's not necessary.
Okay, I mean, um, I'm okay with that. Now I know that I would have to go back to Title One um, to figure that out. But I just want to make sure that um, people know what the penalties actually are. If they, if they do commit a crime, so alright, that answers my question, thank you.
And Member Russell, just one additional thing, the, the, the sales tax code itself will still have provisions. Including uh, what happens in cases of fraud, that stiff monetary penalties kick in at that point. And there are collection provisions in the sales tax code as well that are still going to be there. And those are really the provisions we use to enforce the tax code, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. Well, I guess that brings up one other question. Are we going to use um, collection agencies to collect sales tax or do we do that ourselves?
It's both. Uh, staff is assigned uh, collection cases um, to make contact with deficient um, taxpayers who haven't either filed a return or paid them an amount owed. In a timely manner, and there's a collections process that staff is assigned to go through. Um, when those, th- those, those are usually successful, more or less. Uh, we do have an outside collection agency that we've contracted with to refer other, well, really, any, any collections matter citywide, not just tax. Not just tax deficiencies, so there is that, there is that strategy as well in place.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mister Osborne? Alright, see you now, can I get a motion to approve uh, Council Bill twenty-nine?
I move to approve Council Bill twenty-nine.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comments? See you now, can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Ma- Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
The record show, seven ayes.
Mister Osborne, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Council Bill fourteen, we have Director of Utilities of South Platt Renew, Peter Van Rye. Uh, here to talk about the IGA with Inglewood Public Schools.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. I will be the first of a few presenters on this item. Um, so let me get rolling here. So we've got a, there's an amendment to the IGA uh, between Inglewood School District and the City of Inglewood. Uh, they have three specific uh, items on this IGA. The first of which is the antennas, I think we, we talked about this back in, I believe it's February. And um, this was, this is the, our AMI project, which is our advanced metering infrastructure project. And we need antennas to collect the data, the signals that are being sent by all the senders that are on the new modern metering equipment. We have seven and ten installations that are, seven antenna installations that are already in place. And there were two more installations, one on Charles Hay Elementary and one on the Inglewood High School. It would complete our nine total uh, antennas, which would allow us to collect the signals from the uh, AMI meters. Which ultimately, when we're fully um, when we're fully complete with this. We'll have the ten thousand ninety-four total existing meters able to send the signal. And then ultimately, when we um, finally uh, switch all the flat rate uh, customers to meters over the next uh, couple of years. We'll be able to collect all of the meter data through this advanced metering infrastructure uh, project. So the, what we've uh, worked with the Inglewood School District on and presented a few times at their board meetings. Was this, uh, the antennas, which is essentially a, a rod that sticks up in the air and collects a signal that is put out by the um, the. Uh, meters themselves. And so the, the signal's already in the sky, it's the antenna that just intercepts the signal once it's been sent by the meter. And so the, the two locations give us full coverage of the entire city. Uh, we brought this to Warren Sewer Board in February, um, and it was a, recommended for approval by council. And then um, ultimately, uh, we're recommending this aspect uh, be uh, approved as part of the IGA. But before we get to that, I'm gonna turn this over to Chris, cause he's got the next uh, Director Harvorth, uh, because he has the next piece of this.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, I'm Communications Director, Chris Hargath. Um, here to present a community sign partnership with Inglewood Public Schools. Um, the three sites would include Inglewood High School, Clayton Elementary School, and the Early Child Education Center at Maddox. These were the sites that were identified by the school district. Um, you've seen seven of these signs already in the city, so this would just be a replica of those signs. Um, one thing I want to mention is that the school district and the city have a longstanding partnership for sharing information. We share in our magazine, they share in their newsletter, so this would be a continuation of that partnership. Um, these particular signs would be the, the two-sided variety that you see. Um, there's one out here in Civic Center Park. Um, there's one out here in Civic Center Park. If you were at Celebrate Inglewood, you've seen it. There's, uh, opportunities for, um, uh, promotion on both sides of the sign. Um, one side would be for city promotion and the other side would be for the school district. Um, and as part of the agreement, the city be, the city will be responsible for maintaining these signs.
That.
And I'll take the last piece.
Yeah. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, um, Director Harguth and Director Van Rye. So the last piece of the amendment to the Inglewood Schools IGA is a request from Inglewood Schools Safety, um, Office to, uh, really for the purpose of applying for a SAFER grant. Um, that's a grant that, um, they are trying to get that would really improve some of their, um, communications ability, safety within the schools, um, give them, um, you know, more capacity. And so specifically, the IGA that, um, is in your packet tonight, um, calls for some more work to get to radio interoperability with the school district, um, just general communications during incidents in particular, as well as, um, our assistance and cooperation between school district and the city with regard to training and exercises. So, um, we, uh, the police department has reviewed this extensively, as has the city attorney's office, um, who helped draft these changes, and the school board did, um, approve this IGA amendment unanimously. We're glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much to our speakers tonight. Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, I have a question for Director Van Rye. Um, did you tell the school board that you, we won't be transmitting on the antennas, um, during school hours?
Yeah, so actually what we told them is right now we have no plans at any time to transmit anything. So what we, what the antennas will be doing is they'll be collecting information. So the meters themselves actually do the transmitting. The antenna is just the, the antenna that picks up the signal. Um, so our intention right now and into the, the future is not to transmit, um, as, as part of this, this phase of the operation. Down the road, there may be individual intermittent signals, but we have not, we don't have the system capability for that and are, are not intending to do that anytime soon. And so what I mean by that is we might send a signal to an individual antenna, potentially down the road in the future, but right now that's not our, not our plan. That's what we told them.
Okay, from the water treatment plant. But signals will be gathered there. I mean, like, I was told that every three seconds, the meter reader transmits a signal.
I'm gonna have to get the, the frequency on how often it is, is sending the signal. I don't believe it's every three seconds, but I'll, I can get that information and tell you that. But what it's, what it is doing is it is, it is sending the, the, it, it's sending the signal up into the air and then one of these nine antennas picks up the signal and that captures the data from that meter. Um, the, the, the frequency with which it sends the signal, I think we can actually, I think that's adjustable, but let me, I will get that, the answer back to you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Chief Member Prang and then Member Wright?
Yep, thank you. Um, thank you for all three of the presentations. I think I have a question for each area. Um, on the MOU piece, uh, and the ability to apply for the SAFER grant, is, um, does the SAFER grant allow for us, when you referenced increased capacity, City Manager? Um, and I know that there's been kind of some rumblings around an ask for a second SRO with the school district, so would the SAFER grant be able to help cover some of that cost?
I can start that answer, but Chief, if you can be prepared. Uh, this does not cover that. In fact, we would need to do a second, um, IGA amendment. This IGA actually expires at the end of the year, and so, um, this is just kind of an interim fix to make sure we can do some of these things that we need to do more quickly. Um, but it is anticipated that if the school does move to, uh, choose to move forward with that, um, that that would be an amendment towards the end of the year, um, but it is not tied to this MOU. Is that your understanding, Chief?
Correct, yeah. Th- this is, uh, more about the radio, uh, interoperability. They, they currently, we just gave them a radio that in case of a big emergency, we would be able to communicate with their Director of Security direct, directly.
Okay. So it just kind of ties our system with theirs as far as the communication channels being used and building that capacity?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to be clear, communication, radio to radio, like police radios.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I would also just mention that Chief Jackson has met with, um, all, all saints.
All souls.
All souls, thank you. Um, as well as Inglewood School Districts, they had a three-way meeting, um, two weeks ago. And so that, those talks are ongoing with regard to the SRO. I'm not totally sure that we're moving forward with that, but that's going to be at the, that's the, totally the choice of the school district and all souls.
Okay. Thank you. Um, my second, I don't really have a question on the message, message boards, but I do have an ask. Well, maybe it is a question. So who is responsible to just make sure that things still look nice with the message boards? And I ask that because I've seen, um, on one of the existing ones at Broadway and Hampden, when you're coming off the exit, the whatever paper or whatever that's inside of there gets kind of crankly and it just doesn't look super great?
We've had some challenges with, um, what the vendor, uh, originally put inside the cabinets for us to fix the posters to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when they got any moisture in there, they were warping. Um, so we're gonna go back and, uh, install corkboard in all of them. So I, I know what you're saying and I did see some of those, um, to make sure they look nicer.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question.
I appreciate that. And then my last question for utilities, uh, just, uh, a curiosity. Um, I, I love, um, you know, all of the collaboration that's going on with the AMI project and, and collecting those signals. Do you have any sense of how many FTE hours we would be saving? So part of your presentation just spoke to, like, lesser need for actual people to be driving around and collecting signals and, and just some of the connection and disconnection and, and some of those pieces. Do we have a sense of how much FTE time we would be saving to be able to then use elsewhere?
So we don't have that quantified yet. Um, we do believe that there will be a reduction because we won't be, we, we will eliminate walking routes and we will eliminate the driving routes. What we'll then be able to do is we'll be able to shift those resources to, um, customer, uh, uh, service calls as well as supporting our distribution and collections group. And so we have a, a significant amount of, of backlog, log of work, um, on that part of our system that, um, will, will basically translate from meter reading to customer service and the customer service calls and, you know, meter replacements and, and things like that, and as well as support to our, our, um, distribution and collections group. But as, it's, I think what, it's one of those things that we can, it's hard to say right out of the gate what it's gonna be, but I think we can come back with a, our, our estimate of what it has saved in terms of that amount of time that, um, people are out in the field driving, collecting meters that they aren't right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to see the successes and that would be a good data point for that. Um, I think, I also love the idea of, you know, those monies being reinvested back into the customer service piece of things, because as we, um, increase our technological ability through the use of these systems and we're doing connections and especially disconnections through that system, um, having that strong process around, uh, customer service regarding disconnections and how we've communicated that prior to the system being able to do the work, uh, is really important to me. So I, I like that idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Wright?
Thank you. Next. I think this is either for the City Manager or the Chief.
Uh, Peter said, Peter says not get a question on the City Manager.
So, um, my question is, I'm not sure how one has to do with the other, why they didn't have two separate, um, how the, the antennas have to do with the SAFER program, I guess. So why didn't, why, why weren't two separate items brought to council instead of this all put together? I, I guess, I mean, that's why.
I, I can take that, I think. Thank you for the question, Member Wright. Um, so what we tried to do was save both council and the school district a little bit of time by combining three different things that we needed done into one amendment, as opposed to, you know, you all having to basically do three items. We combined those into one. They all generally came around about the same time in terms of when the need arose. This SAFER grant, um, is time sensitive. Um, the Utilities Department has been talking to the school district now for a few months about this, maybe longer, as has Chris Harguth. And so it, it frankly, from a timing standpoint, just aligned and we thought it was a better use of your time to combine these into one. But you're right, they're unrelated, but they're all part of our relationship, ongoing relationship with the school district.
Weren't, weren't these signs part of the agreement, though, to put the antennas up? That was a package deal from what I recall from the presentation prior, so those are combined.
Well, yes, you're, you're correct. When this came to council the first time, the SAFER grant had not been yet requested from the school district. So, um, the original request was really kind of more one-sided, where the city was asking the school district for something. Um, but during that time, the safety and security person at the school district said, "Oh, we're gonna really need this MOU in order to apply for the SAFER grant." So you're right, it was combined into one IGA amendment.
Okay. I just, I don't know, maybe, all right, thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Any further questions on this item? All right, C. Nun, can I get a motion to approve Council Bill 14?
Move to approve CB 14.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Member Ward.
Just want to say that I'm really excited to see all of these initiatives going forward, but in particular the community message boards. Uh, those, I, I believe this idea was born out of one of our community meetings where, uh, a resident came to me and said, "Why don't we communicate more communications with the schools?" So using the schools where, uh, we have heavy traffic through the community from people who might not see other city communications is really exciting for me and, uh, I thank communications for acting quickly on this and I'm glad to see it coming forward. Thanks.
Member Wright?
Um, I myself like that the radios, um, are going to be in the schools. I think there, if there's an emergency, would a better way where you don't have to rely on cell phones or other communications where the school can communicate. Um, I will say that I think there may need to be a correction on this. It doesn't stop anything where a space might have been put in on the, in between the, next to the last and the last whereas in the ordinance. Um, because they're usually spaced apart and this one isn't, it's not a showstopper. Um, I do believe that, I know that the, the signs and antennas were a joint type of thing. The last one, personally, I think it should have been separated. Um, it wasn't part of this. It's not gonna stop me from saying yes, but I think in the future, something we had discussed previously, you know, as a package thing and then something new, I think it should have been, I don't think anybody's against it, but I think it should be separated. But I, I do, I'm okay with all of this, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for the feedback, Member Wright. Uh, C. No further comments. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to everyone, tech team in that item. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to, what is that, 11C1? We have Director of Parks, Rec, Library and Golf, Christina Underhill, Deputy Director of Parks and Rec, Brad Anderson, Open Space Manager, Adrian Torres, and Capital Project Manager, Gina Olbering. Um, Christina, good evening. This is to talk about the Parks and Rec Bond Project Contract Group.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christina Underhill, Director of Parks, Recreation, Library and Golf, and I also want to add Trudy Peepgrass, our procurement and contracts manager is also with us if you have any questions specific to the contracts. So I feel like this night is three, nine, uh, years in the making, bringing these contracts to you. Very excited about this. Um, so tonight, uh, we're asking the, uh, that you approve the design contracts for Millerfield, Inglewood Recreation Center, Pirates Cove, and then the construction contract for Cushing Park. As a reminder, we have $41.5 million to spend, um, going to our parks, Pirates Cove and Inglewood Recreation Center. And we have three years to do that and spending 85%. Right now we are on track for that. Um, so just to give you a quick overview of the, uh, Renew and Recreate, uh, is the new campaign for the next three to five years that we'll be working on. Uh, we recently brought on Gina Olberdin, our project, uh, Capital Projects, uh, Manager, who will be helping oversee all things, uh, bond-related and, uh, should be working with staff as well as the contractors and many other departments within our city, uh, and also the public to ensure that the bond is being spent properly and we do what we promised to do. Um, we do have an oversight committee that meets monthly, the third Thursday of every month during the day. We do post all those meetings on the Renew and Recreate webpage, um, along with the presentations. Three of the 10 projects are construction-ready. Cushing's before you tonight for that contract for Rotolo and Emerson most likely will come in June as we're out to bid right now for those. Um, seven projects are ready for designs. Uh, Inglewood Engage pages are being used for every project, uh, so the public can log on and see where we're at. We have surveys up for the other parks, uh, thanks to the communications team. They're working hard to ensure the public knows what's happening and when. Um, and that, that Inglewood Engage page will be there throughout the project, um, timeline. And then we also have the Renew and Recreate webpage. This QR code goes to that page, so you can follow along with the projects, um, as they come about. So again, we have two facilities, Pirates Cove and Inglewood Recreation Center, uh, and eight parks, Millerfield, Bellevue Park, Bard Park, Clarkson Amherst, Cushing, Emerson, Rotolo and Northwest Greenbelt. And that picture shows you our first construction project, which will be Cushing Park. This is an overview of the contract approval we need tonight. Um, we have four before you this evening. Uh, for Inglewood Recreation Center design, it's, uh, $590,811. The total budget is 7.7 million for that, uh, project. Pirates Cove design budget is, uh, just over 605,000. Total budget is 6.3 million. And then Millerfield design, it's not to exceed budget of $500,000. There might be some studies they need to do, uh, for that project, but we have 6.9 million total, uh, for Millerfield. And then the Cushing, Cushing Construction, uh, we included $792,094. Uh, this is not to exceed this amount and this includes all the bid alternates. Our budget for construction is, uh, 600. The base bid came in at 616,540. And $20,000 of that can come out of the irrigation line, um, as that's deemed for irrigation at $20,000. Um, so that's overview of the contracts you're approving tonight. I want to, uh, be transparent, we have other contracts that we've already approved. They're under the $250,000 threshold, um, and so Bard, Bellevue, Clarkson, Emerson, Northwest Greenbelt and Rotolo Park, all of these contracts have already been signed and are in process. As I mentioned before, Emerson and Rotolo Park, the designs are complete. We are out to bid for construction. So this is just project status, so you can see kind of where we're at for each of these projects. Um, again, most are gonna be in design this year in 2025 and three will be in construction. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We have the team here as well if you have questions for them.
Director Underhill, thank you very much for the presentation. Member Russell, you have the first question.
Yes. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I, I know that you just said that, uh, if it's under 250,000, it does not need to be approved by council per city policy, but because this is a GO bond and taxpayer money, um, does that still apply, um, Ms. Niles or City Attorney Niles?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So the question is, even though according to our policy, that city staff has the ability to approve $250,000, anything less doesn't have to come before council. But because this is a GO bond and taxpayer money, does it not all have to come before city council?
Uh, no, it does not all have to come before city council because you've established, um, by ordinance which contracts come to you for specific approval and which don't. The $250,000 limit, though, is only for budgeted contracts. So if the project hasn't been otherwise budgeted, then it's a lower threshold. I believe it's 125,000. Um, we have our procurement director nodding her head, yes. So, um, because these projects weren't specifically budgeted during the budget process, I don't believe, uh, then it would be 125,000 that comes to council for approval. That said, uh, you can certainly make exceptions. Uh, you adopted the policy. You adopted the policy and, and if you want to see more contracts for approval, or if you want us to put them in a memo or, or something like that, I, we would be happy to oblige.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Can I ask another question? So who is on the oversight committee and who do they answer to?
That's a great question. So that was a question that came up during a Parks and Rec Commission meeting. They asked if there was going to be an oversight committee. There's no requirement to have an oversight committee. We chose to move forward as part of the Parks and Rec Commission request. So the Chair of the Parks Rec Commission actually sits on the oversight committee. She attends the meetings virtually, but other than that, it's all city staff. Just about every single department is represented on the oversight committee. They get to see every project we're working on. They have an opportunity to review contracts if they wish and they, we meet, like I said, monthly. So it's all city departments, including the attorney's office, city manager's office, finance, many people are sitting on it from there, public works, Parks and Recreation.
Okay, I appreciate that. I have another question. Do we have a timeframe for the overall project? I mean, for spending all the bond?
Uh, right now, we're planning to get it done probably in three and a half years. The way it's laid out, we should spend 85% of the 41.5 in three years.
Okay, so, and, and is there any penalty in these contracts for late performance?
I'll, I'll turn this over to our procurement manager.
I'm Trudy Peepgrass from procurement. A great question, thank you. Yeah, there are liquidated damages in these contracts, so if they are not performing to what they should be performing and the defined timelines, yes, we can imply liquidated damages if that is appropriate in the situation.
Okay, so, I mean, all I'm asking is so that when we get down to the end, even if the first contract is behind schedule, it's going to put everything else behind?
Not necessarily, because we're not using one vendor for all the contracts. If you look at all the design contracts, they're split between five different consultants. So the contracts, and right now, we only have Cushing Park out for, it went out for solicitation, it was awarded to one vendor, and we haven't awarded the other ones yet. So we don't want to get in the position that we have all our eggs in one basket.
Okay, I, I do appreciate that. So, and this might be for Director Underhill, did we solicit bids for, or RFPs for all of these people that were?
I, I will answer that. We absolutely did. So in January of '24, we issued a solicitation for landscape architect and design services. So that was for all the parks that we were going to do in anticipation of the bond. If the bond did not pass, the anticipation was we were going to move forward with three parks either way, with an Arapahoe County grant or with funding. So we did that. We had 18 proposals for that. We shortlisted it to five, we interviewed, and we awarded to those five vendors. And they are included in all of these design contracts. So Super Bloom has two of them, Design Concepts has Miller Field, Goodby has Emerson and Northwest Greenbelt, and then Logan Simpson has Bellevue Park. We then issued solicitations for the construction for Cushing Park. We had, sorry, I think we had five proposals for that or seven. We awarded to Elite who has done Bates Logan and previous projects with us because they have a great track record and they could start immediately. And then for the design for Cushing, not Cushing, sorry, design for Pirates Cove and the Rec Center, they were so specialized that we did separate solicitations because Pirates Cove is water-focused, so there wasn't really a design for that in the statement of qualifications we did. And then we issued Inglewood Parks and Rec because it was building and not parks.
Okay, I appreciate that. Now, and I may have missed this on here, so my next question is, did these RFPs come before council? To, for?
We do not, we do not present RFPs to council. We present the contracts to, they, as a departments, present the contracts to council once they've been awarded.
So this is the first time we would have seen who you all have hired for this portion?
Who we proposed to hire to, yes.
And Member Russell, that is, our, our normal process is spelled out in ordinance in terms of that RFP process, solicitation and bringing the award, as well as the criteria for how we awarded and the list of bidders, et cetera, to council.
But I do remember when, and I don't, I can't name anything specifically, when it comes forward to council, it lists all the people that were the, and then the finalists.
And, and we can present that to you. We do have all that information. Like I said, we had 18 contractors for the design. We narrowed it down to five with Cushing, so we either five or seven, we narrowed that down, awarded to Elite. I can tell you all of them if you want me to tell you.
You don't, you don't have to tell them, tell them all to me now. I'm, I'm just curious because I think that ultimately, council is the final oversight on all of this, and I think it would be good for us to see who all applied and, and why we chose who we did.
Absolutely, because procurement puts together an award recommendation and we present that to the project manager. So in this case, it would have been Adrian and Gina to say, here's the proposals and based on the evaluation criteria and interviews, this is the recommendation and who it ultimately gets awarded to. So we do put that together.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
All right, any further que, uh, go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. Thank you for all the information, I appreciate it. I was excited when I saw an oversight committee. I have had a lot of conversations with folks within the city, and one of the things I have heard is that they wanted an oversight committee. Their vision of an oversight committee and the city's vision of an oversight committee are two different things. I believe, all I know, citizens want a citizens oversight committee. Their thought is possibly somebody from sustainability, someone, a couple people from each, you know, Parks and Rec, sustainability, I think I said budget advisory. So perhaps maybe there could be a meet in the middle where we have staff and then see if anybody's available from those groups. The feedback that I'm getting is it was a close vote, and it was, compared to other, you know, GO bond votes. And the feedback I'm getting is, you know, this is our money that we're spending and we want to make sure that it's spent the way we voted. As someone that's, you know, I have to be the voice for those that are coming to me, I can't argue with that. So I don't know if it's something that everybody would agree with, but if you have a oversight committee already, maybe we could expand it a little bit with citizens on that also and just kind of do, I guess, subcommittee from those committees that already exist and see if they would be willing to join while this is going on. And I appreciate that you have a oversight committee going already. I really do appreciate that, so, just feedback that I'm hearing from.
And that's a, that's a great comment, Councilmember Wright. And that's why we have our Parks and Rec Commission. They voted on who they wanted to send to the oversight committee and, and our Chair was the one that was selected. And then we have another individual from our Parks and Rec Commission who's actually been reviewer for all these contracts and bids that have come in. So he's been a part of that as an outside resident looking at these in addition to staff. So I'd be happy to reach out to the sustainability committee to see if they would like somebody to join. But we do post every meeting on the Renew and Recreate site, so it is public to watch those meetings after the fact, and they're more than welcome to send any questions they have to staff or even our Parks and Rec Commission, too.
And, and folks from Budget Advisory have reached out to me also, saying that they would be willing to. They would like to, actually, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Prang.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I would just add to what Director Underhill offered around community involvement. Parks and Rec does get a regular update, or we're starting to get regular updates from the oversight committee, so it's not just that one member that was selected to participate, but we've got the rest of the residents that have been elected to that board or commission to have some ongoing oversight. But I, I hear your point about other types of insight into that group. I don't have any questions on the contracts themselves, but I do have one ask, and I hope that it's a really easy lift and you probably already have it. But when we see presentations like this, for me, my head gets a little muddied around, like, what pieces are design, what pieces are construction, et cetera. So Ms. Olberding and the oversight committee or whoever, could, could we have just a document that has like each project within the bond broken out by design, construction, and then the administrative, like, costs breakdown with a total for each and then a summary page that wraps up the total for the entirety of the bond and have a spend rate for each of those kind of attached to every time we hear from you and we're, we're taking action on these? Because for me, it's just easier to look at that one quick document and be able to see, okay, here's where we're at. I understand that some of it's presented in different places within this, but I would just like to have a concise place for it.
Love that, yeah, we can definitely put that together. And we will be posting, we'll actually have a tracker on the Renew and Recreate page showing where we're at overall, and that'll be broken down into the various projects. But we really haven't started too much yet. Construction with Cushing will be our biggest first start, and then we'll also have all the Inglewood Engage pages for all the design that's happening, too. So thank you for that recommendation, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Member Ward.
When I look at the plans for Pirates Cove and Miller Field on the contract, part of the scope of work is some community engagement meetings. What are we looking to gather from a community engagement meeting? Because we have a scope of work that we approved when we passed the bond. We generally speaking have a scope of work that we bid now, so we already have a pretty good idea of what we're planning on doing there, and yet we're doing multiple community meetings to talk to the community about what they do or don't want here. What happens if we find that the community or the feedback that we're getting is calling for the alteration, significant alteration to the scope of work that's being done?
Yeah, that's a great question. So ultimately, we have a council decided on the projects. What elements should be at each park that you said, yes, let's move forward with that? And we have our budget, so we have to stay within that budget. What we're looking to get is feedback on, if we do like a splash pad at Miller, what do people want to see in their splash pad? Do they want to see a big bucket that dumps? Do they want to see little sprayers? You know, we're going to have to put a restroom in there. What's the orientation of the restroom? There's things that the residents can talk about, the types of benches we add in. So it's the fun part of picking the paint colors for your house and all the amenities that are going to go in it. So ultimately, we're going to stay within the budget and what we promised our overall residents we would be doing, but now it's to get really specific on the pathways that we have through the park. Do we want just a straight line? Do you want to have them curved and to have some fun elements along those pathways? We have residents have great ideas in adding cool things into our park system that we never thought about that makes it more fun to be in those parks. And really, that's the goal, is to get people in those parks, discovering really cool things. The playground going at Cushing is a great example. Parents and kids came out and gave us feedback on what they wanted to see, and now we have really neat little hide and seek type things you can find on that playground, nothing we would have thought of. So, and, and we also had a suggestion of painting boulders gold at Cushing. We never thought of that because that's where gold was first found in Colorado, that's what the sign says, right? And so it's little things like that that we want our residents to speak up and say, hey, I saw this somewhere else, I'd really love to see it in a park, and that's my destination park. So, yeah, it's a good point, we have to stay within our limits, and we'll remind the residents of that. And that's one thing we do when we do public meetings, and we'll be doing public meetings for all of these parks. Cushing, not so much anymore because it's going into construction. Emerson, we've already done those public meetings and so with Rotolo, too, but everyone else is going to have a say. And so we put the dollar amounts on the different products that we put up. So a playground, it's a half a million dollars, you know, or a bench costs $1,000, you know. So our residents kind of get to see the budgeting of how all these projects are going to work and how we can afford to do it, or maybe we can afford to do it because it's just too expensive. We can't have 20 benches in one park because it's just too much and over. So, no, it's a great point, and we do want to hear from our residents and also keeps them engaged so they know what we're thinking, what we're planning on doing. We won over Rotolo residents because we had a public meeting and the design team presented what the public wanted. They shrunk everything down with the native plants. And now it's an actually discovery park where you can walk through and learn about the plants and be part of nature. And so we heard what they were saying, and again, all the concepts that we posted early on were just to get people's thoughts going and dreaming big about what these parks could become for our future.
Sounds like a good plan. I have to admit that one of the things that really triggers me personally is when somebody asks me for my opinion, then acts like I never gave it, or they completely disregard it. Why would I bother? So I, I hope that we do communicate the actual scope of the opinion that we're asking for to the members of the public when we, when we hold public outreach, because there are going to be things that we can't do.
Right. Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you for the update on this. It's so exciting to be at this point. I know when we were discussing it last year, there was a lot of like, but what's it going to look like? And we're now getting to decide what it looks like. I have two quick questions. One, at the neighborhood meetings, the different engagement you're doing, Inglewood Engage surveys, do you feel like you're getting adequate feedback? And if you were in a situation where you didn't think that maybe the open house wasn't well-attended, how would we address that?
Sure, great question. So our communications team, I believe, is doing an awesome job in getting all this out to our public. With the public outreach, we would love to be at the parks. Gina's going to be at all of the neighborhood nights along with some of us, advertising what we're doing. So we're going to have constant communication and conversations with the public. If for some reason we don't get enough input, we're going to go back out and get more input. You know, if only one person shows up, that's really not enough. But we want to hear from a lot of people because this is their project. You know, we're just the stewards of it and spending the money to get the people what they want. And so, yeah, ultimately, we'll continue doing surveys and outreach as best as possible to get as much feedback as we can, and we'll rely on you all, too, to share information you're hearing from your constituents, too.
I appreciate that approach, thank you. And then my second question, some of the things that I think are the most special about our parks and the things that we hear a lot about is how it feels very distinct to Inglewood. I'm thinking about the skate park at Cushing right now, how there are so many kind of Easter eggs, for lack of a better term, about our history. And so many of the designs that I'm seeing in some of the contracts and that I've seen in other places are beautiful. How are you also thinking of making it feel like it's connected to Inglewood and it's not just a park that could be anywhere across the metro? And especially, how are we approaching that when it comes to working with outside consultants and designers?
Well, what's really exciting is many of our consultants actually are Inglewood residents. And so they live here and they have buy-in to our park system and our recreation facilities. And so we rely on our residents, too. We have residents that have lived here their whole life and have generations, and so we want to hear from them. Miller Field's a great one, that we want to capture the history of Miller Field and why it's named Miller Field. There's a really cool story behind it. Well, it's not that cool, but it's a good story as far as why we named it Miller Field to honor a child. And so, you know, while we're taking one field away to make it more play space, there might be other ways that we can capture the baseball theme of Miller Field throughout that whole park. And that's where we're going to really rely on the consultants doing their due diligence on history, and we'll ask our residents that have been a part of Inglewood for a long time, like, what would you really want to see that makes it feel like home, that captures the history of Inglewood? And so I know we'll do that. We did that with Cushing, it's going to happen with all these parks as we start talking to individuals about what they really want to see. All right, great, thank you guys for working so hard on this.
All right, any further questions from council? All right, C9, can I get a motion to approve 11C1?
Move to approve 11C1.
Thank you, Member Prang. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? All right, C9, can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
The record shows seven ayes.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Really appreciate the input and, yeah, looking forward to continued discussions on our parks. So thank you so much. All right, everyone, we're moving on to mayor's choice. I believe everybody has a packet in front of them, but Member Wright brought this to our attention a couple of months back, and I wanted to make sure that we actually tried to get something done here. Have we had something in front of us, didn't we not? Yeah, here it is. Anyway, Member Wright, I believe you're only, are you, well, you were sitting on the Historic Preservation Board, but now we no longer have a liaison on that board because it became quasi-judicials. Okay, well, there we go, but you're currently no longer sitting on any city boards. Go ahead, just correct, all malleys.
I'm on malleys, yes.
Sorry about that, Member Wright. Anyway, I wanted to see if anybody was open to making a change in order to allow Member Wright to be a liaison to a board. We normally make these changes, you know, after two years, after, usually around the We normally make these changes, you know, after two years, after usually around the January, after the January, when we select new board members for boards and commissions. But I wanted to just see if anybody would be open to that. I think, Member Wright, I think I told you, I'd be open to opening up the Sustainability Board that meets on Tuesday nights. I have Water and Sewer right before that, so it makes for a long evening. So, and I have to sit on the Water and Sewer Board as mayor. But that's one committee that I would be open to opening up. I'm not sure if any others have thought about other boards, that they may be open to, you know, making a change, at least for the next six months until we make a new change or have this discussion again in January 2026. Any thoughts, any comments? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I meet on two boards, or I sit on two boards that meet monthly that I would like to finish at the year with. But I have two that are like the ad hoc ones that meet only a handful of times a year. One is the hospitals, which I would like to keep since it's in my district. The other one, though, is the school liaison, the school board liaison. And we only meet about once a quarter, but I'm happy if Member Wright would like to start doing it instead of myself. They often meet during the day, and it can be a little tricky with my work schedule.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else? Is everyone still happy with their boards? Or go ahead, Member.
My load is relatively light, but so I would defer to those of you who have more loaded schedules to pass those off.
Yeah, the only two that I sit on are really just the Water and Sewer and Sustainability. I have the DDA as well, but... Member Russell, are you reaching for the button?
Well, do you do Dr. Cog also?
We do. And actually, Member Wright is the, she's the alternate for that. I'm happy. She picked it up last month. I'm happy if she takes it. I think, Member Wright, you're looking for a city-specific board. Yeah.
So I could take the sustainability, and then you said it's the, Member Noonan Camp, the city school board, the quarterly one?
Yes, with Member Ward. I believe it's on the last page.
Member Ward, go ahead.
I have to admit that my attendance on the Water and Sewer Board has been less than perfect. So that may be an indication that I should step down from that particular board.
And they meet, actually, so they meet the Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month at 5:00 PM.
I think I've made more meetings than I've missed, but it's, it may be close at this point.
I think I was previously like you on the Water and Sewer Board and the Sustainability, and that makes for a long night. And sometimes the meetings overlap, so I don't know. You know, I think it would be best, it's best if different people do those, too. So if Member Wright's picking up sustainability, I'm not sure it would be best to pick up Water and Sewer.
Right.
Well, I'll leave it to you, Member Wright. It sounds like there's some options there. I am fine just keeping Water and Sewer Board and Sustainability tonight. I do like meeting with it. But it does make for a long night, especially after having a long night on council the Monday before. But I, you know, I do enjoy the group on the Sustainability Board, but...
And I would be more interested in the Water Sewer Board if Member Ward's willing to give that up.
So with that, since that's a quasi-bore, we actually have to make a motion to make that change, correct, Jackie? Or City Attorney Niles? Do we have to formalize it, I guess?
The better practice is to formalize it, yes, through a motion.
Okay. So I guess, Member Wright, we threw out a lot of options tonight. Were you just looking at Water and Sewer Board, or was there another one that piqued your interest?
Well, and then, Member Noonan Camp, I will take...
The school?
Right. And it makes sense because she says it's during the day. She works during the day. So that probably makes it very difficult for her.
Are you good with that, Member Noonan Camp, with making that change? Okay. So I guess I will ask if we can make a motion to appoint Member Wright as a liaison to the Water and Sewer Board, as well as, just to formalize this aspect as well, as well as to the city school board in place of Member Noonan Camp. Can I get that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any further comments?
Just to note that I'll be the one giving up the seat on Water and Sewer.
Correct, yes.
And I thank you.
All right, perfect. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Perfect. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming with suggestions. All right, just to finish off mayor's choice, there were just a few things I wanted to highlight for tonight. I want to thank staff and everyone involved with Inglewood's, Inglewood celebrates? Celebrate Inglewood, yeah, the other way. I knew it sounded wrong when I said it, but it was a great event. Lot of great feedback from citizens. I think the weather was great. We got a passing storm, but it wasn't much. But no, just very, very thankful for everything that went into it. It went very smooth. And so many of my council members there, it's just, I'm very happy with how that has turned out. I think City Manager Lewis, I think you mentioned that that was Sam's, Sam Watson's idea. So I think it's just turned out pretty well after, after a few years. Also want to congratulate Bridge House on their grand opening last Thursday, I believe it was. You know, we've been talking about the Bridge House for many years now. And my conversations with some of the members of staff that day, I don't think I really understood every aspect of what they were capable of. So just very impressed with everyone that is staffing Bridge House. I'm very happy to have them as part of the community. They're doing some pretty amazing things, and they have pretty big plans in store. So just been very, very impressed with what that, how that turned out. And happy to have them finally open their doors and just happy to just have another partner within the city. So that's it for me for tonight. Anyone have anything for council members' choice? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. I also have to note, I lost it, Celebrate Inglewood. See what you started? Very well. The council tent was busier than last year, much busier. So I remember praying myself and Krista kind of deep breathed on doing the plant a seed with council, the good things, the bad things, what could be done differently and stuff. I think for doing something different for the first year, it was, it went very well. There were several of us that attended the Inglewood Chamber Dinner Awards. And Ms. Idemie Nickle got the Lifetime Achievement Award. And then there's, trying to think, some of the businesses. Breakfast Queen received Business of the Year. It was nice. Great awards for a lot of businesses that are deserving and stuff like that, great people and stuff. You recognize Bridge House. It's had several events this week. It was a busy week. I can't remember them. I was trying to look them up. So I'm sorry if I missed things. But a lot of it was staff-oriented and stuff, and they have just done a phenomenal job on everything that they have done. And I just want to recognize them and thank them for everything that they have done. There was another one that we were at. I can't, I can't remember.
The South Broadway. So as a team, everyone picked something that they were able to put out last week.
Oh, yeah, it was phenomenal, everybody.
Just thankful for this council for making time for everything that was put out last week.
Yes.
All right. Member Russell, go ahead.
Yes, I attended the youth awards. And with the Chief of Police, he was there also. It was, actually, it was a great meeting this time, the last. This is the first time, I didn't realize that the county has a building over in Aurora, close to Aurora City Hall. It's Health and Human Services, I think. So it was at that building instead of the hangar. And actually, it was much more personal in there, and it was really nice. And appreciated the awards and also the county. It was pretty exciting how they ran it. So that was great. Just one other thing for council members' choice. The CEAC, we have, council has decided that we can do virtual attendance, correct? For not all the time. So if, if we do virtual attendance, I think perhaps the staff needs help with doing that. So I don't, I don't think we, this time, I think we're going to have a quorum, so there's not a problem. But...
And, Member Russell, that's for which commission?
Code Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Does it just need some AV help with that? Is that basically what?
I think that's probably what it is.
Okay. So that's coming up this Wednesday, then, right?
Right. But we don't need to do it this month. I mean, if there wasn't going to be a quorum, it might be. And actually, that meeting got canceled last month for lack of a quorum.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much for that update, Member Russell. Member Prang, go ahead.
I'm going to jump on the bandwagon and share the some excitement for all of the events last week, the ones that I attended. Bridge House, definitely an amazing program. It was so exciting to see so many representatives from board members to county commissioners, to city council members from all, all of the areas involved. I actually spoke to a woman who's interested in joining the board and lives nearby and just has a lot of enthusiasm. But I also did really want to highlight and thank the staff that work for Bridge House. They're just always so warm and welcoming when we walk into that building. I got so many hugs that day. There's just such passion for the work that they do, and you can see that bleeding out in their communications. Also, I think some of us had the pleasure of eating some brownies that has created, it's an enterprise business shoot off from the Boulder Bridge House. And they were delicious. And you can order brownies and, you know, for parties or events, boxes of them, or they'll cater them for you. And I think that that's a really great business to help support. So super excited for that. I wanted to thank everyone that came up and spoke to me at the South Broadway revitalization, talked to a lot of people that I haven't spoken to before, and got lots of different opinions on what's going on. So many great ideas. And I was just so happy to hear that, you know, from that night to tonight, there's been a double, doubling of people signing up for the strategy groups. You know, even for, you know, people that aren't necessarily a fan of revitalizing the area. I tried to do a lot of encouragement, like, get on one of these groups. Lend your voice so that, you know, us as council members can have that balanced viewpoint with the work that you do. So that was a great night. And then, what was the other one? Oh, yes, Celebrate Inglewood. I want to thank for everyone that came by the booth, offered thoughts, and also let me play with their kids in the soil. That was super fun for me, having my youngest be a teenager. It was really nice to hang out with some little, little kids. And Member Ward, despite his black thumb, was right in the mix of it with us. It was just really fun to engage with people that way. And I do hope that we continue to be creative in how we pursue engagement and conversation with residents at those events.
Thank you, Member Prang. All right. See nothing else? Oh, Member Ward, go ahead.
Just one more that nobody's noted yet. I was a guest at the Littleton State of the City event Thursday morning prior to the Chamber Awards banquet. And that event's very interesting. It's a combined event with the Littleton Chamber of Commerce and the City of Littleton. So they do some sort of co-sponsorship. I was a guest of the South Park Owners Administration sat at their table. And it was, it was good to be there. A lot of the Centennial City Council members were there as well. So we had Littleton, Centennial. I don't think Sheridan had anybody there, but I was representing Inglewood there and a couple of county commissioners there as well. So they put on a pretty big event, and it was good to see some of the things that are happening at Littleton as well. I'll note that there were a number of Littleton City Council candidates there as well. So it was interesting to see how early their election cycle is starting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Moving on to City Manager's Board.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have one kind of business-related item. We had received a request from Eric Bertolucci within Inglewood Arts about naming the training room that's really mostly for staff, but it's going to be a shared resource in the former MOA space. He is suggesting that particularly with the Museum of Outdoor Arts having removed the Mayor Olga Woolison, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing her name, who actually died while serving the city, that we, that bench has been removed and the art piece that went with it. We appealed to MOA to please bring it back. That was, we were not successful in that. But that he is suggesting that we name that training room in her honor. And I just told him that we would check with city council and see if there was any objection. She was very instrumental in bringing the MOA to the city, as well as, you know, I think being a big proponent of public art in the city. It was that, that might have been the time when we did the 1% for the capital projects for public art. So would there be any objection to that naming? It would just be a sign on the outside of the room.
Okay. Former mayor.
Former mayor of Inglewood.
Former mayor of Inglewood. Olga, are you proud of her?
Woolison.
Okay. I have no objection, and I don't see much objection on council, so.
Okay. And then the last thing is just, you all have taken many of the things that I wanted to thank staff for. I will pass that all along to them, particularly the events and things that were planned last week by city staff. But I also just want to thank council, and I tried to do this at the ribbon cutting for movement, excuse me, for Bridge House. It's really important for council to be at these events, and y'all have just been knocking out of the park in terms of kind of splitting and dividing and conquering and being present. And that really, you know, just helps the whole organization. So thank you for your commitment. I know all of you have multiple commitments and are volunteering for the most part your time with the city. So just on behalf of staff, thank you for your extra service in those regards. So, thank you.
All right. With that, everyone, that concludes tonight's meeting. We are off next week. We are back on whatever that first Monday is, June 3rd, for a city council meeting. So everybody have a great Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.